So the first item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda. I'm aware of one question change, and that is, under Old Business, the first item, the special exception, 1909-01 SBHD Sibling LLC Conference at Event Center. The applicant contacted us today and asked if that consideration of that application be postponed, so I think we need that for this evening's agenda. That is the only suggested change on our agenda.
I do have an item that I'd like to see added to the agenda under Old Business. There was an agenda item from April 2008 where this body voted 6 to 1 to have a public hearing on an ordinance amendment allowing signage, special provisions for signage for emergency services such as fire calls and rescue squads. And I'd like us to have that discussion so we can schedule a public hearing for next month.
I don't believe there's any reason we can't have that. Is there some announcement here? Are there any other suggested changes to the agenda?
If there's no other changes, I would suggest we adopt the agenda as measured.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, I go actually with minutes, but I believe it's coming up October 16th. I think everyone received a copy of those. Hopefully we've had a chance to read them. Any recommendations?
Would you?
Not at all.
I suggest that we adopt the minutes presented as my motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So now, ladies and gentlemen, we have about to open the public comment period. I'll just remind folks that we have one topic that is forced tonight for a public hearing, and that is the law on capoeira contractors yard. None of the other items are scheduled for an open hearing this evening. However, the public comment period is open to whatever it is here to speak about. I would ask with a pretty full house here tonight and a pretty full agenda, so please try to keep your comments focused and brief and non-repetitive if you can, and if we're more than five minutes, we'll see how we can keep that good. And with that, and I would also ask that if you would like to make a public comment, that you come forward to the microphone and identify yourself as well as your address and the district in which you reside. And with that, I will open the public comment period. If anyone would like to testify.
Hi, Ron Maxwell, Flint Hill. Let me be the first to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I'm going to read this editorial for those who may not have already read it in the newspaper, the Rappahannock News, and hopefully I think it's wrong in five minutes. Addressing the Wrong Questions Only Is Wrong Answers. Not surprising then that the last marathon meeting of the Planning Commission was spent in interminable answers about height restrictions, lattice versus monopole, painting colors, megahertz levels, setbacks, balloons, waivers, and other mind-numbing migraine-inducing details. These details provide the cell tower advocates the means to tie up, use up, clutter up, and screw up the conversation so that the forest is always lost for the trees. Opposition is simply worn down by this catalog of distractions. The message, except your fate, is inevitable. The basic question, however, is not between cell towers and the connectivity they provide versus no connectivity. That's the question the cell tower companies want us to accept. But that's a question based on a false premise, that cell towers provide only solution. The questions we should be asking are these: What's the best way, the least intrusive way, the safest way, and the most enduring way to provide connectivity to the county? Most of the opposition to these cell towers doesn't arise from folks who oppose connectivity. It arises from residents who justifiably and passionately seek to protect the unique rural character and spectacular view sheds of our county. So why are we pitting neighbor against neighbor once again in this D-list recurring unpleasantness when sensible, non-controversial alternatives to cell towers are now available? Listening to the comments of my fellow citizens last time, I found myself in agreement with nearly everyone on both sides of the issue. Who cannot sympathize with the lady who spoke of her husband lying on the floor for hours unable to call for help? Who cannot sympathize with the homeowner who will have to stare at an industrial-scale cell tower looming over her property? Why are we putting ourselves and our neighbors through this? Cell towers are ugly as sin. Everybody knows it. They are a blight on the landscape, an eyesore, and affront to every person who's chosen Rappahannock as their home. The radiation they emit is hazardous to our family's health. As expected, just like the tobacco companies didn't want to talk about cancer, and the car companies didn't want to talk about seatbelts, and the petrol chemical companies didn't want to talk about DDT, and the pharmaceutical companies don't want to talk about opioids, the cellular companies continue to deny the extensively documented risks to human health. Increasingly, however, these denials bring hollow. Our representatives, you are representatives of the Planning Commission and the county supervisors, have a primary responsibility to protect us from the hazards to our health, safety, and well-being. Such considerations should take precedence over convenience or parochial business interests. So even if cell tower technology was the only game in town, such considerations would have to be weighed in. The good news, however, is that there are viable alternatives for fast, reliable connectivity. Major telecommunications companies are well underway to providing fiber optic connectivity all across the nation. We know this service is already coming to Rappahannock County. We are interested in hastening the transition from the old contentious covered wagon technology of radiation cell towers to the new up-to-date technology of fiber optics. This can be readily accomplished by an all-in commitment by the county, which means no more cell tower approvals. This will incentivize the telecom companies to accelerate their plans to provide fiber optic to the county. Any new approvals for cell tower construction will only slow this process down. Let's have the law of supply and demand work in our favor, not against us. Let's put an end to this bickering and accept with open arms the solution that is staring us in the face: No more cell towers. And once the fiber optic system is up and running all across the county, we can start to work on removing the hideous cell towers already installed. And that's something that can unite all of us, not divide us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well done, under five minutes. You must be a professional.
I'll be sure.
You want to go next, Mr.?
It'll take me a little while to get to the microphone.
We won't count that against you.
Phil Irwin, Flint Hill. You will be discussing later this evening whether or not to recommend to the board supervisors approval of the two cell towers. That's the topic of my comments because I am looking at a release from Space Weather which says that Starlink satellites have been launched by SpaceX, and there are 60 more of the some thousands or more communication satellites that will be in space within months. And this will mitigate the necessity for these cell towers. Please, you have a comprehensive plan that you're presumably working with. The provisions of the comprehensive plan are all against the installation of these intrusive structures that probably will be there long after they are no longer needed. Please, you do not have to recommend approval for these structures to the board supervisors. You are in a position to recommend against. May I please ask you to do so?
Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Metford Candy from Piedmont District, where my family's from Piedmont District. Our family owns Millie's Cabin, the closest property to the proposed Woodville cell tower site. While we recognize a lower tower and a monopole improvements, in our view, the community should not have to sell for a cell tower that is eyesore simply because it's slightly less of an eyesore. The proposed tower should be rejected because it is inconsistent with Rappahannock telecommunications law and the comprehensive plan in many, many ways. We have detailed dozens of ways in which the proposed tower would violate the law and the plan in our prior letters dated September 17, 2019, and August 19, 2019. Despite the modifications of the proposal, the vast majority of the points raised in our letters will still apply, and the proposal should be rejected. I won't repeat all due tonight, but we'll focus on a few. First, the proposed tower would be a permanent blight on an otherwise pristine landscape and will mar the priceless scenic beauty that all residents of the county treasure. In our view, this is because this tower is in an inappropriate location. Secondly, the proposed tower would violate many provisions of law because it fails to take proper account of the interests of neighbors. Importantly, the application fails to satisfy the requirement of the law that the cell tower be in the interior of a property. Instead, the proposed tower is at the very edge of Eldon Farms' property and smack up against ours, about 500 feet from the property line. CWS has acknowledged that this is because Eldon Farms rejected the other possible sites because they were too close to what it considers to be historic barbs. But the law requires the commission to consider impact of a tower on all historic buildings in the area, including our 1740s cabin, not just those owned by Eldon Farms. In any event, the law requires that a tower be in the interior of a property, not at the edge, and that the proposed tower fails to satisfy this requirement. Third, the proposed tower would decrease our property value because it's so close to ours. We all know now that unfortunately Eldon Farms is for sale. But the site of the tower should not be chosen to maximize the seller's sale value when it will negatively impact the value of our land. Eldon Farms will be paid some unknown amount for allowing the tower. We won't. We should not have to bear the economic brunt of the tower location. Fourth, CWS seeks a waiver of the requirement that they plant trees to screen the structure from neighbors. We would like CWS to put in plans to screen the tower. We ask that the waiver not be granted. We think the tower should be moved to a site further from the road and further from our property line. The county still knows nothing about what other sites were considered, although the law requires consideration of alternative sites. We also suggest that the county consider forming a panel of a few engineers or other cell tower experts to advise what is needed, what locations might be preferable, and what coverage of proposed towers will be. The county does not know whether there might be adequate or even better cellphone coverage from other less intrusive sites. The county should not have to rely on the undocumented conclusions of an interested party like CWS that should obtain professional, disinterested advice. The decisions to be made are all too important to do otherwise. The choice the county faces is not between 199-foot tower and 139-foot tower in the current proposed location. That's a false choice. The choice is between approving an unsightly tower in an inappropriate location and asking CWS to go back to the drawing board and propose better alternatives, and that's what we ask the commission to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Claire Westen from Piedmont District. I live about 500 feet from the proposed cell tower in Millie's Cabin. It was built in 1740s. I just wanted to remind the council committee of their own comprehensive plan, so I just thought I'd read a few quotes. I know you know this textbook, and I do, but I'll be here to keep it in mind tonight. Chapter six, comprehensive land use, plan goals, principles, and policy states that a scenic county shall mean one in which preservation and enhancement of the natural and historic beauty and cultural value of the countryside should be respected as being of foremost importance. And with goal number one being preserve the overall view shed of the county in its unspoiled natural setting, which gives its special character and identity. And then, under principle three, policy twelve, restrict the potential impact of utility-scale land solar service towers and other utility-scale facilities on prime agricultural land, sensitive or scenic landscapes, bridges, crests, and view sheds from scenic highways to historic sites and other sensitive settings important to maintaining overall country atmosphere. And I would just like you to ask yourself if these policies and values align with a cell tower, whether it's 139 feet or 199 feet. That's visual from our scenic byways and historic homes. The proposed tower won't provide coverage to many homeowners. That's been addressed. I see a huge need for connectivity in this county, but maybe we should explore other rapidly arising options, such as fiber optics and 5G, and to seek outside counsel about what these possibilities could bring in the future. Yeah, the current cell tower in Sperryville has not been equipped, and I think we should ask ourselves why that has been, how quickly will a new tower provide coverage when the old tower already built isn't providing any benefit to current residents? So just ask you to keep it in mind tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to do next?
Harold Bevah, Piedmont District. I've written a letter, and the chiefs have written letters, so I don't want to repeat that. I would just like to remind you that all of our fire and rescue chiefs in the county have said that this is an important and necessary safety feature. So I would ask you, to better protect our citizens, to help alert the citizens to please approve the towers. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to do next?
Hi, Jonathan Lovins. I'm in the Hampton District. I'm a 20-year retired Green Beret, and I spent 20 years doing telecommunications worldwide. I'm not for or against the towers. I guess that's a political position. I wanted to clear up some of the misconceptions about technology. Starlink will not be ready for five years. It will be cost prohibitive right now. Elon Musk is the only person with a Starlink terminal, along with the U.S. Air Force. This technology is rapidly emerging, but it is cost prohibitive. Fiber optic costs millions of dollars to run. Rappahannock County doesn't have a population density that Verizon cares about. If you have copper lines and your phones have been out during a storm, who here spent less than two weeks having their phone service reconnected? Verizon doesn't care. They're a return on investment company. Rappahannock can continue to stay in the dark ages. I'm more concerned with the security and safety, EMS, the 911 system, and those kinds of things. I have cellphone coverage at my house. I don't even have a cellphone right now. So I just wanted, the county needs to look at, I agree with a better comprehensive plan. I think the county needs to look at the concept of emerging technologies, but I think that we need to consider the fire EMS, and it's an important thing, and I also like my view. So I'm trying basically just to help out with the technologies. That's probably the most important thing. I don't want to die here because I can't get an ambulance, but if it happens, it's okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Who wants to do next, sir?
Ron Maxwell, Jackson District. I wanted to read to you from the Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee Report and Finding Recommendations dated June 7, 2010. This is from the Advisory Committee Subcommittee on High Technology and Professional Services. And it's the number one recommendation. The county should solicit each of the major cellular carriers to provide an update as to the opportunities and obstacles to expanding cellular coverage in the county. This may be accomplished through forming some type of collaborative effort between the county and the cellular carriers. This never happened. It was almost 10 years ago. The problem was put on the table, it's been ignored, and basically what was recommended here was that we take a proactive approach to cellular communications. It didn't happen, and now we're in a, we've been in a reactive mode for nine years. At some point in time, we have to make a decision. We can't keep putting this off. Just like you said, oh, we've got this new technology, but that's five years down the road. So now we're 15 years out from making a decision. If we were in this room in 1925, probably, and CWS was proposing that they wanted to come into the county and they wanted to put poles along all the roads in the county, and then string miles of wire through the county, what would we be saying? Would we be saying, no, it's going to interfere with the view shed? And we'd be sitting in here, and these lamps would be run with kerosene, not electricity? We've got to make a decision on this. We can't continuously kick it down the road. And this may not be the answer, but we've got to come up with something soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to do next?
Hello, I'm Sally Hanes from Sperryville, and I want to present a petition that's been circulating. I'll just paraphrase it to spare us all some time because you've heard it all before. We value self-service. We value scenic views. We don't think it's always a need or or proposition. In Sperryville with the monopole, we think we have an opportunity to have a well-canopage tower. And as you consider future towers, we would ask you to take another look at that monopole and at least reopen the contract if that's what's necessary, so we don't start adding sky glue attachments to the monopole to make it look even worse than it does. That just happened to be one where we really could have camouflaged it. And I'll present these to you. It is still circulating, so we'll have more.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Ben Mason, Stonewall District. I think we all care about the rural character of our county and the beauty, and I'm here to say I don't think we should be allowing arid, cultural land to shift over to commercial use. I moved out here from Tyson's 20 years ago. I had a moving company in the landscaping business, and I couldn't run it in my residential. I couldn't run it anywhere I lived. I think the law and the comprehensive plan is solid and healthy, and I think you can stick to it, and I ask that you not approve the contractor's yard that's coming up and maintain our rural character and the beauty that is Rappahannock.
Thank you. For others who might be interested in that application, I will note that there will be a separate public hearing on that, so don't feel like you need to come up. It's fine that you did, but I just want to make sure that others realize there will be a separate hearing on that. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
The Scrabble Tower would be right across the road from us. I was sitting on my porch today, and I realized when the leaves are off in the winter, I would be looking at a cellphone tower. It's not just the Alden Tower that's a blight. It's the Scrabble Tower. My parents bought that property over 50 years ago because of the views. When my mother goes on her porch, she can see mountains all the way around. If she looks to the right, she'll be looking at the cell tower. This is one area where everybody in my family agrees, my brother, my mother, me, we do not want a tower there. And this company says there have been no complaints about the Scrabble Tower. That is false. That is false. Let's see. Painting a tower, making it a monopole, making one shorter, these are cosmetic changes. They do not change the nature of the cell tower. It still radiates radiation, although they deny it, which is a pollutant, out into the air of a pristine, beautiful rural county. It is bad for our health. Again, they deny it. I have so much literature that is credible from experts, professors, people like that, I mean, more expert than me. I take my cues from them about the health effects. It's ugly, and they don't camouflage them. The fiber optics is not years down the road. Rappahannock Electric is going to run a backbone right down 522, but they're going to tap into the news. When they first planned to run that backbone, the county said we wanted to use it to run fiber to the home. This was before they even knew it was going to be run. If we can get funding and we can work out a way to do it, and some counties, the county itself has built a fiber network, and they've recouped their costs down the road, that means the county controls it. But it is not years in the future. It is here. And CenturyLink is running fiber to the pole and then DSL or cable to the home in one side of the county. This would be coming down the other side of the county. It's very doable. We just have to have the will to do it and figure out how to do it financially, what is possible. In fact, I've got a whole page to read on counties that have done it, and I'm going to read that. Cellphone use has been touted as absolutely necessary. I don't own a cellphone. It is not, it is an addiction. It has been created, and we've been told we cannot live without 24/7 connectivity to everybody else. We always did before as a human race. I don't know why suddenly we can't live without 24/7 communication with everything. As far as fire and rescue, I sent an article to everybody in the county that I found that the old radio towers and police radio work much better in a hilly terrain with mountains, and you need fewer of them than trying to go with cell towers. Cell towers are too unreliable with hills and mountains. You round a curve, you lose your signal. You go up a mountain, you lose the signal on the other side. And they recommend that you upgrade, like you have a good, one or two good police towers. You don't need that many, and that they use police radios. And I will draw your attention to the fact that in California, the firemen removed cellphone towers from many of their properties because they couldn't think straight to go to fires. They were losing the memory. They were being confused. They were having headaches. It was bothering them so much. You can read about this. Just Google it. Removal of cellphone towers and stuff. You can read about this, just Google it, removal of cellphone towers in Southern California, and they've done it for many of the fire stations. So, you know, what's in the interest of the public is also in the interest of fire and rescue. And sometimes the old is not the worst. If landlines are maintained, if, they don't go down, and the electricity goes down, they work very well if maintained. In Southern, in California with the fires, the cell towers went down, the wireless went down. The only thing that's worked were the landlines. If they hadn't had landlines, they wouldn't have been able to save in those. And we need landlines as a backup emergency maintained, and we need to pressure the companies to do that. Verizon supposedly is expressing interest in the Sperryville Tower. That would mean they would force us off of Verizon landlines, which they're not maintaining properly, onto that Verizon cellphones, which give us brain cancer. We need our landlines, we need them, maybe not primary, but we need them. We could also get phone through fiber, but again, that hooks up with electricity. So we've got to think about, well, what if the electric grid goes down? If the public doesn't think about these things and be proactive, these companies aren't going to think about it. Verizon doesn't care. You know, we have to pressure them. So, I've already made comments in the past, I've sent links to people, I'll continue to do that. I'm opposed to these towers coming in, cosmetic changes don't change it. We do not need wireless technology, it's contrary to all the propaganda, but we do not need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Paige Blinney, Jackson District. I want to discuss two subjects. Subject number one is cell towers. In classic Rappahannock fashion, we are arguing what versus how. We don't address the how, but we talk about the what. My personal opinion is, yes, we need cell coverage. The problem is, we haven't looked at the alternatives of how. As I believe I mentioned to you before, the T-Mobile antennas that are going up at Sperryville and Boston may very well cover because of their, at such a lower frequency. But have we even bothered to ask T-Mobile what their coverage maps look like? No. And now their alternatives. I mean, there was another, two people that asked for getting separate engineering, which we have a contract with, a contract that we could use to analyze what is really needed, rather than depending on a company that has a financial interest in building towers. Doesn't that seem logic? Look at the how. Everyone agrees with the what. And maybe Cynthia doesn't think everyone needs cellphone coverage, but I like it. But anyway, we all need it, all right? Second subject is this planning commission. Mr. Light, I have a number of questions for you. One, thank you, Ms. Smith, for putting it on the agenda. Why after 19 months was the ordinance amendment to exclude volunteer firefighters not brought forward a public hearing? Why is that? This whole blow-up controversy that's happened over the last two weeks, we could have been totally up with. Do you have a reason why?
It'll be on the agenda, sir. Your comments are...
I want an answer to the question. Why do you not do it? It's your responsibility. You're not going to answer, are you?
This is the only question.
It's on the agenda, sir.
All right, okay, second question. Why are the May amendments, which got approved for public hearing, why had that not happened? How many years has that been, Mr. Ponic? Two, three?
It's too long for me to remember.
Right?
Over two years.
Why is, why is the comprehensive plan, which, what was it, three weeks ago we had the joint meeting, we were going to make some quick changes, again, there's no meeting, not even on the agenda today to talk about it? What's going on?
It is on the agenda to talk about it, but...
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I missed it. What's going on? Personally, you're the chairman, I hold you responsible for this lack of action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak?
Do you think I wouldn't be the second one to wish all the happy Thanksgiving? David Ponic, Stonewall District. I'm not going to rehash all I said last time about the cell towers, but I generally agree with the comments of, mostly for the reasons that Mr. Blinney just espoused. I think the commission needs to get an independent opinion on some of this. And the only other thing I want to add to that is, the proposal has been changed, as I understand, to such an extent that I think the commission would be well advised to get an opinion from the county attorney about whether or not the changes are so substantial that you have to have another public hearing. And I don't know if you don't have or not, but if you haven't, I think you should give some consideration to it. And probably Mr. Davies will agree with that, because there's a recent Supreme Court case that came out, and that's pretty much what happened. They changed the proposal between the time it went through the planning commission public hearing and the board supervisor's public hearing, and then they said, well, they never had a valid planning commission public hearing on it because the proposal had been changed. So I think you have to take a look at the facts of this and all what the changes are. I guess the assumption is that, well, they're making it lower and it's less obtrusive, but I really don't know all that, and I'm not a technical expert, I don't know about the frequencies and all that. I've heard all these people talking about connectivity, and we have connectivity down the island, and of course, I'm a comm, yeah? So...
Tom?
Oh, you got it, good. Well, that probably answers one of these questions from before. Anyway, the second thing I want to talk about is Higginsville Fire Department and Rescue Squad, which as most of you know, I'm the representative and the counsel. And when this all came up, when the sign up, that's when it came to my attention of what had happened. I wasn't directly involved in it back then, but the minutes I think you've all seen from the, the board supervisors sent this over to the planning commission for review of what could be done, how to change the ordinance to exempt the fire companies, or change the ordinance and clarify it. The county attorney gave an opinion that Mr. Henry cited at the meeting when he discussed it with you, Mr. Light, and said, "If the county attorney can't figure out what the ordinance is, how are we going to figure it out?" I think that's pretty close to a quote. So it needed work. And the second, that was in February of 2018. In April of 2018, the commission voted six to one, and Ms. Lee's motion, Mr. Henry seconded, and the only person who voted against it was Mr. Binnyack. So, and he wasn't on the commission after another month or two. Anyway, the bottom line is, it was, I know it's on the agenda, thank you very much Supervisor Smith, I think you should discuss it tonight. Now, I've had some correspondence that you may not be aware of with Michelle Summers, the Senator Administrator, about, I'm frankly not entirely clear of what the proposed amendment was, that either exempt them altogether or to fix up the parts about the illumination that were just not clear. And all of this, as Mr. Blinney said, is so unnecessary. In 1986, I can tell you one thing, when the sign ordinance was adopted, nobody ever heard of LED lights or bulletin board signs, like what they're, what is at issue. So, it really needs to be updated, which is another one of the very longest of things that our zoning ordinance just hasn't kept up with. That's not this commission's fault, it's been going on for a long time, and I hope that you will take a look at it and give consideration. The fire department, you know, provides a very valuable service, and the sign is a public information device that helps do that. I think they've had the last couple of weeks, some public information about cleaning your chimney and so good and so on. And there's just, there's many other signs around the county, by the way, where they have the same kind of LED lighting and nothing's, they never got any violation notices. And so I think the firemen and rescue squad volunteers are rightly asking, "Why are you picking on us?" So I hope this commission will get out in front of the issue and do what needs to be done, which should have been done 19 months ago. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak? Yes, sir.
Deep Geek in Hampton District. I wanted to say that Mr. Maxwell, I think eloquently represents the overwhelming opposition to the cell towers. And I, unlike some of my neighbors, I like to live in the dark ages, the reason I came here. You've got Clevinger's Corner right on the, right on the border, and it's sort of a harm of things to come. I've expressed opposition to the cell towers in every venue, from board supervisors to planning commissions, and the cell towers are in conflict with our comprehensive plan, they're in conflict with science, and I urge you to listen to the science that Mrs. Price presents. It's in conflict with this extraordinary, extraordinary, extraordinary area that we call home. And you as a commission have been tasked as guardians of this spectacular legacy, and we urge you to follow through on it. And with all due respect to the neighbors, and again, who could not take somebody to the people that have a plight with the accidents and children being in school, but with all due respect, I say if this county doesn't suit your needs, if it doesn't provide the services that you desire, vote with your feet and just move. This planning commission is an advisory board with no legislative powers, and I would ask that you advise CWS to put their applications in another county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to have a public comment?
Two things I wanted to talk about. I will talk about the cell towers. I've talked to you many times before. I think it's something that's very important. A lot of people say, you know, the view shed is very important. I agree, and I also agree that communication is very important. Harold Vivo said about the safety considerations of our county, which is very important as well. I have said things about the tree, so I will show you the picture again. You can see where the tree is. I don't know if CWS can do a tree, but this would be something that would, it's right here, and these branches wave, you know, they move, so it doesn't, against the background, it would actually blend in with a forest. Even a monocle, if it were done with a dark color, is still going to blend in with our environment. I understand people who are saying it's too close to their house, perhaps this one particular one might be moved by 100 feet, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not a technician about that, but I do know it's very important for our county to have that. Does it go against the comprehensive plan? Absolutely not. Our comprehensive plan is agriculture and tourism. Agriculture is very important, that's why we have the wide open spaces that we have. We're trying to encourage our farmers. There's a whole subset of people who are trying to bring new farmers into our county and to support the ones shop local, to support our local farmers. So the other thing, I would plus there are the safety concerns as well. The other thing I'm going to bring up, with our comprehensive plan, it's important for this particular one to be done and to get on with the next five-year plan. I think our current comprehensive plan has done us in good stead. If you look at a map, I'm going to show you this. I took a map of Virginia, okay, and what I did, I don't know if you can see the highlighting, you can see where Rappahannock County is. All the dark lines are where growth has occurred around the metropolitan area. In other words, they're coming from DC, they're going out through Leesburg on Route 7, they're going Route 50 into Middleburg, they're going up to Winchester, they're going down 95, they're going down the 29 corridor down toward Charlottesville. The only connecting thing we have is to 11, and we got bypassed when 66 came, and a lot of the leaf peepers and everything, we don't, don't come to our county anymore, so we're trying to figure a way to get new tourists and everything. Because what this is doing, 66 then connects to 81. Now, I was, I was on the road the other day coming back from Woodstock, and I was on 66, and in Strasburg, Richmond American is there. Richmond American is one of the big builders, but it's on that 66 corridor. So I think our plan has protected us, and if we're smart, the comprehensive plan is supposed to be a general idea, and then our zoning is the one that comes with the rules and regulations to help funnel the growth to the proper places where we are. I went to that joint meeting of the board supervisors and planning, and our new person, Mary, brought up a good plan, it's a good idea, I'm sorry. She said, "If you try to do like Foxer is doing, if you're trying to do what Arlington is doing, you are going to become sort of like them." I think it's what she was trying to say, and I agree with that. The newest challenge that we have is Clevinger's Corner. It's now going to be a great and huge development right on our border. And I've, I've looked at that as well. It's all on that 90, 29 corridor going down through Charlottesville, and it's going to bypass us again, once again because our comprehensive plan has protected us. So I think we should be proud of that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Any other public comments? No? I will, I will, you're my closer to tonight's public comment. Thank you all for your talk in here. The next item on the agenda is a, the public hearing on the Long Capielli, we see, Contractor Yard, special exception, 1901-01. Ms. Summers, would you like to introduce the topic?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Long and Mr. Capielli have applied for a special exception for a contractor's yard for property located at 14168 in Highway in Amisville, identified by tax map number 3132A. The property is 17.8950 acres in size. The applicant proposes the size of the contractor's yard be approximately 2.62 acres in size. At the planning commission's last meeting, October 16th, I reported that all outstanding violations had been brought into compliance except for operating the contractor's yard without a permit. A memorandum dated October 15th from me was also presented, which addressed site plan waivers. With the concerns of the planning commission, the application was deemed complete, a motion was made for the public hearing. The Health Department commented on this application on March 19th, that they saw no evidence of an overt system malfunction. They did recommend a well cat be replaced. It was our understanding that the proposal is to build a farm building and a proposed shop, which would have no plumbing involved, therefore, there was no need for a water supply or septic system, so they had no objection to the request. VDOT has indicated through email to my office that they would need the locality's approval for the proposed use and a site plan prior to issuing a VDOT permit for the proposed entrance to the property. The applicants are present, if anyone has any questions for them at this time.
Thank you. Before I open the hearing, I know the applicant is recently, yeah, if you have anything to add to the materials they've presented, sir?
If not, there's so many things to say at the beginning of it, is, we have worked with the Summers and Mr. Currie closely, we've followed everything that they've asked us to do. It was the county's request in the first place that we applied for this permit. When we first came here, and Mr. McCarthy said there wasn't going to be a problem, that we were allowed to do that, we were really shocked when it changed. we were allowed to do that, we were really shocked when it changed. We are on a main road. We are on 211. We're not in the back someplace off of Kid Hollow Road or Bessie Bell Mountain Road or something like that. We have great sightlines. There's only one commercial truck driver that's involved, which is myself. My son is the other person that works with me, with my wife, and occasionally we have a couple of friends. I have a gentleman here this evening that we haul his hay from Fauquier County all the way out to Pennsylvania, down to North Carolina. We have with us the founders and the operators of the Isidore Project, which is what we grow produce on our property for them, which is given to the Front Royal Food Banks. Last year, or this year, we did over 1,000 pounds of produce for them on our property. We also assist them in growing on other properties. So we are still involved in agriculture and farming, and it is a family, small business. The other people that are here with me that are wearing these buttons to differentiate us from the issue of the phone towers, because otherwise everybody would just blend in, and I didn't want to tie up this evening's time, especially because I think we're baking early for Thanksgiving. At three minutes apiece, that'd be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 people, we'd be here a good bit more. Out of all of the neighbors, there are two neighbors here. In support is my next door neighbor, Bill, and opposing is one neighbor across.
Mr. Capielli, if you could just direct your updates to us. We'll have a public hearing, and I would invite folks to speak as they like, but please...
No problem. We have not only been in compliance most recently, we've received 17 or 18 zoning permits for other things that are on the property, and we are fully zoned in compliance at this moment. So we're willing to work with you.
Thank you. Anything else? I'm sure we may have questions for you, but thank you for that.
Sure.
With that, I will open the public comment, or sorry, the public hearing. Same rules as before, if you don't mind. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this application?
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, hello again. I'm here on behalf of Jack Atkins, who is directly across 211 from this property. I've sent the commission a letter. Has everyone got it? Okay? So I'm not going to read it. I just want to highlight a couple of issues. The first issue is the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan says in policy one, goal five, that, it's on page 76 of the current plan, that the commission and board supervisors are supposed to make land use decisions and plans that approve of conversion of important farmland to non-farm use only if overriding public need exists to change that land use. Existing development areas cannot accommodate a proposed new use, or extenuating circumstances are shown to exist. And we submit to you that there's none of those three factors anywhere in what's before the commission. Nothing. This is an attempt, basically, to circumvent the zoning ordinance by calling this a contractor's yard, when in fact it would be a rezoning of the property to commercial use. The size, which is highlighted in page one of my letter, of this proposed building would make it one of the four or five largest commercial structures in the county, including the Co-op, the Eileen Plant, Rappahannock Cold Storage, Copper Fox Distillery are all, even Copper Fox is only 10,000 square feet. This proposed building is 14,400 feet, square feet. And so all these other buildings that are noted in my letter are all in a commercial or industrial zone. None of them are in an agriculture zone. And if the comprehensive plan means anything, and the zoning ordinance means anything, this is a time to say so. This proposal is completely at odds with both. I also want to call the commission's attention to the fact that in this application, and in what was said tonight by Mr. Capielli, that somehow he and his son are going to work there. And there, I don't know, he sort of implies that they're going to be the only ones that work there, but that's nowhere in the application. You don't even have a lease. Mr. Capielli is in litigation with Mr. Atkins, or maybe vice versa. They submitted, we asked for their lease, and we have a sworn interrogatory response, and they'll file in this court, that they don't have a lease, not for the house, not for the property, not for anything. There's three legal entities. They're just, they say they're just living there while they fix the house up. That's their, the terms of how they're living there. There's no indication anywhere in the application of who is going to really be using this contractor's yard. Mr. Capielli and Mrs. Capielli have a corporation called Cap Industries, and if you look at the list of equipment that they just put in their court filing on November 2nd or 3rd, you'll see there's a whole list of equipment there that belongs to Cap Industries. Then there's a whole bunch of equipment that belongs to Mr. Long's LLC, called Off the Wall Enterprises, however appropriate. And then there's yet another Paladin LLC, that is, according to the court papers, what does this hay business, an excavating business. So I really don't know, but the point is, neither do you. And I don't see how the commission could recommend an approval. It's never done anything like this in the past without any documentation of who's going to be operating this contractor's yard. Is it Paladin? Is it Off the Wall? Is it Cap? Is it Mr. and Mrs. Cap individually? You don't know. We don't know. And it shouldn't be approved until that is resolved. So based on that, and I want to say about the neighbors, I'm not really authorized to speak for them, but I think that Mr. and Mrs. Jordan sent a letter. I'm not sure if the commission got it. It went to address to Mr. Curry, I know. I sent you a couple of letters that came to me from the other neighbors, Christie, one of them, and the other people on the other side. One of them said, we have horses that died. We've been keeping horses there for years, and when this thing was operating, their horses died, and they suspect, they can't prove it, that it's some contaminated water. There's no provision in this thing to protect that.
If I may, please.
There's no provisions in the proposal that's going to protect the neighbors from runoff, from God knows what kind of equipment. And I, again, invite you, if you haven't been down there, and go look, because they say they're in compliance, they say that they cleaned it up. Go look at what's doing there. And ask yourselves, if you live, I think most everybody on the commission lives in an agriculture district, if that was going on on the property next to you, you would peak about as livid as Jack Atkins, or almost, because I'm familiar, could be as livid as Jack Lake is living. So, anyway, for all the reasons in my letter and all the reasons here tonight, this proposal doesn't pass muster under the town plan with the zoning ordinance. It ought to be recommended for disapproval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm Jack Atkins, Amesville, Jackson District. The first piece of information we have there is a lot of Mr. Capielli stating he wants to clear land for agricultural use. It's been two years, let's say. Well, he was notified on November 6th, 2013, a one-year timeframe of clearing inhabited fence and inhabited calves with pasture, poor pasture. No fencing, no calves have been placed there at this point. Also, on November 31st, 216, he was given some violations. And now, we're over three years into this, the county has to take court proceedings to get part of it cleaned up, just part of it. Because the next page on the met application, Young Stand is 1752, will not be visible from any adjoining property. Look at those four photos, first four. See if you think that would be visible from your place, if you live that way. Okay, 1752B, not going to interfere in the traffic. Look at the next three photos, blocking traffic. Look at the date on it. Go to the back, you've got the special exception to get the papers for it. Where the board supervisor has denied that application for the very same reasons as we have the information from me. 1752A, B, and E, he's also in violation of I and J. 1757A, there's no explicit statement on this application stating what he's going to do. So I have a request that this application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak on this application?
Phil, Irwin, Flint Hill. I would object to your approval of this type of application for one basic reason, is the conversion of farmland to a use that has nothing to do with farming. There is a provision in this county for locating that type of activity in a designated area, and this is not that designated area. I object to the conversion of farmland to commercial use, and I would urge you to deny this application.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Page 11, Jackson District. I'm against this application, simply because it is a rezoning from agriculture to commercial. It's very visible. It's right on the entrance to the county. If you drive by right now, these are all trees, you see everything, even all the material that's still sitting on the feet out of driveway. The second point I'd like to make is, early on when this controversy started, Mr. Capielli came to me at a picnic and explained how this whole thing was a tax avoidance issue for him and Mr. Long. You can draw from that whatever you want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this application? Last call. Yes, ma'am.
I don't need the microphone. I just want to say, I've watched this thing go from the beginning to the end, and in a county where we're trying to encourage small businesses and everything, I would hope you would consider the way that, I believe, Mr. Capielli has tried to work with the county and through all the different requirements and everything, he is trying to do something with his property, and so I would hope you would take that into consideration. If you were to deny this thing tonight, at least I would hope that he would have the opportunity to figure out another way to continue some way of making a living here in Rappahannock County. I think it's rather discouraging when we see a lot of negative ideas being put forth and rules and regulations that need to be made. I understand rules and regulations. I also understand how sometimes there are need to be variances or reasons for something to be changed. Change has already come to this county, and I think we need to try to work through and make things a little more palatable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else care to speak?
I'd like to say something, please. My name is Carolyn Butler, and I'm P. Mont. As some of you all know, a similar application as this was brought before you all and the board of supervisors about 10 years ago by my nephew, Michael Brown. And you all turned it down, and, but I must say, there are other ways to, if you want such a business, other places it can be done. My nephew took it to Prince William and turned it into a multimillion dollar business. Thank you.
Thank you. Hereby close the public hearing on the Long Capielli Contractor's Yard application. Mr. Henry, I believe this is the district, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Well, first hand, I've had a county in 1981, bought a house on Jordan's Road, which is 678, right below this property. Part of 211 at one time, so I lived there a couple of years, so it gave me a familiarity with this property, and also with the owner of this property, who was Otis Jordan. And Mr. Jordan's family, I guess, here, was one of his relatives, was Duke Jordan, I guess. I never knew how long ago Duke Jordan lived, but I guess Otis Jordan was a relative. They're relatives. And for that hill that you described to people when they come from Warrington out to 11 at the first time that they have an opportunity to have a wonderful view west is when we get to Duke Jordan Hill there. And Otis was somewhat of a businessman. I think he worked for Superior Paying for a long time, and then he got into business for himself with a couple of dump trucks. And I think he hauled gravel for people and did different things, made a haul asphalt. And he kept his dump trucks there, and everybody got along. And we have this process that we're going through tonight to recognize that various things that people need may work in some areas and may not work in other areas. And I think Otis has passed now, and that's why the property was sold and everything. And I go by the property, and I look in there from the road, and all these violations have been apparently legalized now, but when you look in there, it's not the same property it was when Otis lived there for decades and his family before him. It's a lot of items there, and a lot of sheds that they draw in and drop there, and trucks, equipment, and things like this. And this is something that when we have permits, I think about, well, does this work here, or does it work someplace else better? Or how does this affect the neighborhood? And when I go by there and I look at this... And when I go by there and I look at this as it is now, even before I considered this application, I don't think we would want every property in Radhanak County to look like this. And, you know, I think the way, the reason this ordinance was developed the way it was, was to give small business people that resided here in the county, whether they were small contractors with dump trucks, or small contractors with a couple pieces of heavy equipment, or maybe somebody that had a couple of delivery trucks, or whatever, to allow them to operate out of their home, off their property. We have a number of people in this county that are plumbers and electricians, and they have garages out of warehouses and salesmen homes and calls and things like this, and it's worked out pretty good, and it's developed the culture and the business environment that we have in the county. And when I look at the size of this operation, the posed building, what's already there, the site size, I don't think this is really compatible to what we are looking at in the future and for the character of Radhanak County. And on the staff notes here, when I look at the comprehensive plan here on the principal seven, and when we talk about environmental quality, compatibility, environmental quality, your world character, and these kinds of things, I don't see where this really fits in. I think, you know, if Mr. Capelli had come in and he had a couple of trucks, and had a business plan on what he was doing, and proposed to us, and not this large building, and not this large site that we have dealing with, maybe it would be more appropriate. But for the size of this operation, it's something that should really be moved to an industrial area, whether that's someplace in Radhanak, or Warren County, or Fawcett here, and fit into industrial location and community that has other properties like this. And I don't see where this is appropriate to this area, so I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Mr. Kohler?
Well, I've had two site visits to the property, one was today. I think I can empathize with what Mr. Henry was saying. I lived here in 88, and I love the county. And I think that having a, this happened in an odd way, where all this just suddenly happened, and then we were being asked to fix it. That's a bit of a problem. I think that it's a, if all these, if two more properties down the road, three more properties, 10 more properties down the road wanted to change and start operating in this fashion, it would be a different county, it just wouldn't be the same. And I think opening the door like this, changing an agricultural property to, I don't know if it would be classified commercial or not, but it certainly has that feel. I'm not sure that that's something that the county would benefit from in the long run. And I think it does go against a number of items in the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Kohler?
We have a very ambitious agenda this evening, so I'm just going to defer to the comments of Mr. Kohler and Mr. Henry at this time.
Thank you.
I also appreciate how little time we have this evening, but I will just say that I do have sympathy with the applicant. I know he's gone through a lot of effort to try to work with the county and, you know, work in compliance. So, and I do think it's important for us to try to encourage financial use of our properties, but I also am aware that this is a very large structure he's proposing, and the use, this on its face doesn't appear consistent with an agricultural use, but otherwise I'll defer to him.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, anything to add?
I would just like to bolster the ideas already said. It seems to me that what Mr. Henry and Mr. Kohler said about a proliferation of uses such as this is an instructive way of looking at it. Would we want to have more uses than what can only be thought about as visual challenges that this kind of use would entail? I don't think we do.
Thank you, and I'll just say I tend to agree that we, I think we tried very hard to work with this application, very creative and very varied, and very hard to actually sort out. At the end of the day, contractor yard principle is, as Mr. Henry said, to support a clear contracting operation, be a relatively incidental part of the business, I think, or to support something that is fundamentally agricultural. And in this case, it seems like the agriculture and the contracting parts of it are somehow subordinate to the equipment comings and goings. It still doesn't add up to me in that regard. So, Mr. Henry, I'll turn it back to you if you'd like to make a motion on this application.
Make a motion if we do not, this application based upon concerns about the economic impact on the residential community where the property is located and surrounding areas, changing of the world character of the neighborhood, potential adverse impact upon the tourist industry and the county's fiscal stability in terms of future environmental issues, and the fact that this property is located in a scenic pantry way to the county here. So, with consideration of those items mentioned here on the principal seven, I would like to make the motion to deny it.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Do you have a motion? Hold on a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to recommend denial for the reasons Mr. Henry cited, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Next item tonight is, two items of new business, both preliminary reviews. First is a preliminary review of specialty use permit 19-10-03, Chester Gap Lines, cease tourist. This summer.
Thank you. Again, this is a preliminary here before the planning commission for tonight. Chester Gap Lines LLC owner and Chester C. applicant have applied for a specialty use permit for a tourist home. The parcel is located at 4619 Remount Road at Warren County Line. It is zone village residential and is 0.23 acres in size. This use is pursuant to section 170-36E and subject to additional regulations of 17066K. The applicant proposes to rent out the three-bedroom home when they or family are not using the home themselves. The health department commented that the septic system serving the house was approved in 2007 for a three-bedroom home. They performed a site visit on September 26th, which revealed no evidence of an overt system malfunction, and they have no objections.
Thank you. I believe this is actually the Wakefield district, which is not represented here tonight, so I guess I would toss it out if anyone would like to open us up. Is the applicant here, by the way? Is the applicant complete? Anything you'd like to add to the applicant application before we discuss?
No, nothing I'd like to add, and I believe I sent a document as well, as well, in case of my.
Okay. Any takers to open us up?
I'll be happy to do that. It seems to me that this is a reasonable use of the property in question, and doesn't pose any liability to the neighborhood or neighboring properties. As stated in our comprehensive plan, tourism is one of the goals, and this tends to lead toward that.
Mr. Burke? Any other commentary on this? I would note that the staff report, Miss Summers had identified some prospective conditions in the given recommendation of approval. This is not one that had the question about septic, right? This one?
That's correct, that's the second one.
It's through it.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
This is zone R, is that what you call? Which is five acre, zoning, I believe. That's correct. I believe that's a five acre zone, but.
It's zone village residential.
Okay, it's zone village residential. Okay. Okay, well, my question is.
I guess my comments on this are that it seems to be fairly straightforward, and it's located close to the Appalachian Trail. It seems pretty straightforward. There's no discussion about, is there an indication of food service? I didn't see that in the limitations, but I think we.
We can always add that.
Conditions of the use of typically, that food is not provided. Is it your intention to provide it?
Absolutely.
You also, it is your intent to rent it as a single unit, is that your single unit?
And, Mr. Chairman, on the health department comments, they did not indicate that they recommended that condition of no food services provided, as they have on similar other applications.
I understand, but I think in our sort of working distinction of tourist homes, even if it's not explicitly generally, is in that vein. And this is a case where, to me, if we're talking about what is essentially a short-term transient rental that is otherwise the same as other rental of the property, typically in my mind is one unit, renting it as a single unit and not providing food. In that sense, it remains pretty purely residential, albeit very short-term residential. I guess the other question for us is, for some of these applications, we've either recommended that we proceed to have a hearing at our next meeting, or that we move this order to the BZA for their consideration.
One question. One question. I guess the only issue that BZA will be able to address, is that it doesn't appear this is on a 50-foot right-of-way. It's only 30 foot and 40 foot. Going to the plat.
Is that correct? Does this property have, does it, is the access to this property through a right-of-way?
It is, and I actually have an adjoining property which shares that somewhere. I have 4615, remember.
So, the right-of-way is through that parcel only?
No, there's one additional, which is 4611, Remount Road, which is Roger and Patricia McCollum.
So, you should probably check.
The plat that you have in there, you see that, it has 30-foot right-of-way, gravel right-of-way, and I see it mentions something.
40 foot for.
Plus a 40 foot, yeah. So, we've got two different, and we needed one of us, and both of us are 50 foot. I guess the BZA is going to have to address that.
Might be worth taking a look. Is that a provision that we're able to waive, and we have that 50-foot right-of-way issue?
Since we're looking at other questions, does your road also serve the Chester Gap sellers?
It does, yes.
Are they operational yet?
They are. I am actually the owner of Chester Gap Sellers.
Okay. I knew it sold, and I didn't know. So, I guess that creates traffic with this road. Are you doing anything different there?
I'm not. So, one of the reasons I purchased the property in question is because it had the right-of-way for the majority of Chester Gap sellers, and I thought that it also makes sense to secure that under my ownership. So I maintained the gravel road, I maintained this entire piece to 500.
You're just doing the normal tastings that were going on like it was before there?
Yes.
So I also, as we're discussing this, I recall that there had been some incidents of concern from neighbors about activities at that, parties at that one, I don't remember, I think that was.
I don't believe that exists.
Chester Gap?
I don't think it exists.
Yeah. It was the one over by the, well, anyway, where have you got it?
The BZA will review this right-of-way, and they may find it unnecessary, but it's a case-by-case basis, so it's up to the BZA.
You have a question that these photos make me wonder, is it just like there's a lot of landscaping or greenery around the house? And I'm not familiar with this property, but is there visibility from neighboring properties to where we may want a required screening in the parking area?
There is, there, one adjoining property, which is Scott and Lisa, they currently have their wood stacked, so they have created the boundary between the properties, which is an extensive wood pile.
Good neighbors.
Well, it also, the kids their dog pays well, so I'm okay.
I think the BZA.
So, any other questions or concerns, and to have a motion? Mr. Henry, it looks like you may be getting ready.
Since it's no Wakefield district, I'll make a motion that we pass this on to the BZA for their consideration.
We amend that to include, to draw attention to the right-of-way concerns and also possibly parking screening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Do you have a motion to, open second? There's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We oppose. Thank you very much. Therefore, next stop will be the BZA, I guess not tomorrow.
I'll be in touch.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is the preliminary review of specialty use permit 19-17-01, the Neighborly Enterprises LLC and George Neighborly Tourist Home. Yeah, I think. All right, this is the applicant. Mr. Kohler, I believe this is in your district, I'm not mistaken.
I guess my first question would be, do we want to proceed with the applicant not being denied?
Well, I certainly think we have the question about the septic on this one. And I'm going to get an answer for that, so I think you would like to, I would certainly know. And I don't want to get an answer for that, so I think you would like to, I would certainly be okay with the motion to table this in that regard, but I'd also like to hear if others have any particular questions we might be able to identify other questions. If we're going to table or whatever action we table, might who wants to, to put on the table any other sort of questions we might have for the applicant?
Well, my, my, I've been to the property. It's, um, it's pretty well screened. They, they mentioned parking for four cars, I think that's a bit ambitious. Two cars, three cars are the most, unless you're going to have people backing out so people can get out of their coffee company. It is a pull-in and back-out situation. It's a two-bedroom house, so it would have to be more than two bedrooms. And the septic is totally unknown, it's a steep hill and I couldn't determine where it would go. So, I would recommend that the septic without any distribution box, without being in the field, we have to be, uh, just scared to see the extent of it.
So, anybody have any other comments on this? Otherwise, I might suggest that we, we heard from everyone who cares to.
Again, I take again here according to the plat, it's less than 50-foot right-of-way, it's a 40-foot right-of-way.
So, it sounds like we're not as far along on this one. Are there some questions? There are some questions, certainly Mr. Kohler, are you suggesting that motion to?
One more thing that they might want to say. I don't, do they have a back-up HOA in there?
That HOA was challenged at one point and I, that's my understanding. I don't know that they, and it was, I think it was voided, but I'm not sure if it was ever reestablished. I've never, haven't dealt with anything in years, I don't know whether they have HOA or if they have covenants on, on the mod stepwood. You mentioned anything about uses or, uh, particularly. So, on motion?
Yes, please.
I have a motion to table this with directions to, to, uh, come back to, to, to the HOA or covenants, that he understands there is a 40-foot right-of-way which may or may not be approved and that it's a two-bedroom residence, you know, more than four people and that the, uh, the family.
Well, if we're, if we're tabling it with questions, I, I would suggest that maybe we stay with the questions and then think about the conditions when they get around to consider.
Otherwise, it's, uh, I don't think it's.
So, it sounds like there's three areas of questions. Any other thoughts or questions about the move, the motion? Not, uh, welcome to second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That concludes all of our preliminary review business. And the first item here, old business was removed from the agenda and that brings us to the preliminary review, special exception 19-08 of Tulip Carl and Donna Hemmerson Country Inn. This is a preliminary review, but if you'd like to add anything to the application.
No, I'd just like to remind you that this is an application that's kind of, I think seeing what I would characterize as an administrative issue, we've had approval for five bedrooms there on that property, subject to certain conditions that we were supposed to have been met within a year with, to put it, divorce proceedings. And I talked to Randy and I said, Randy, what in the world, half the nation's calling us thinking about other things. So, what I'm hoping is to correct some things. We've moved it from five bedrooms to six because the business is changing. Little Washington Winery has allowed us to create a new business, business venture called Little Wash, or Durban Wine Tours, which means Donna and I will be leaving the country for periodic intervals, not so many next year with the following year, or we'll be touring European wine sites. And in that situation, we may have an opportunity to build a sixth suite periodically.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll be here. New name for the term hot seat though, I think tonight.
We're all good, that's what we're here for. So, I believe, actually, I'm not certain, is this in your district?
Tell us more. Everything. So, so there's a, there's a revocation still in process here.
Ah.
Just the whole history is.
Okay.
We had a notice from Michelle that said, you're not supposed to be leasing five bedrooms, you're only allowed to be leasing three. Sat down with Michelle and concurred that yes, in fact, that was the case. It's not something that we understood from a previous zoning administrator who said you're good for five. I did not get that in writing. So, we moved to lease only three rooms. At the same time, we were advertising five rooms, the, the reservations come in one at a time and as we got to our three rooms, we would block and mark them as sold the other two rooms, so that a casual observer might look at our website and see that there were five rooms sold and that is the conclusion that we presented to the, to the BZA. The BZA launched a revocation hearing on the strength of five rooms being advertised and not the fact that they were being leased. That has, that decision has been appealed and is in the hands of the courts right now. We had a wedding on October 5th for a personal friend of ours. That went before the BZA and the BZA has then initiated action that will be taking place tomorrow. So, I'm wondering if my grandbabies, and we have 10 of them between Donna and I, if they want to get married up there, do I have to come to the zoning administrator? Do I have to? It's our personal property, we collected no funds for that, it was not something that was leased out of space, we do not do that.
So, tonight, are we talking about going from three to six or?
Yes, it's private. Three to six.
Three to six.
If I may, to be clear, I think what's happened is your, your permit is in some state of revocation, what you're doing is a property for a slightly different use, if I understand.
Well, there's two tracks. As I understand it, there's two tracks. First of all, it's through the BZA and that appeals processes, which is in the hands of courts right now. But as a measure, as a measure to correct the five-bedroom oversight on the part of Randy and he moved it over to us, we're moving through a parallel path that I'm hoping will make one point move or the other point move. So, I think this should move forward and what I'm hoping to do is to get this in front of some group of people that says, what are you trying to do, Carl? And here's what we're trying to do. We have opened a tasting room there because I think as a product, I think a tasting room at an inn made good sense, because three weeks after we opened the tasting room on Christmas Tree Lane, I had somebody who came up to me and said, are there any rooms available here to rent? And I said, yeah, they're in the county someplace, but I didn't know where to refer it. But as a product standpoint, from a tourist standpoint, I think a tasting room and an inn fit together very nicely.
Mr. Henry, do you have more questions?
So, what we're considering tonight is simply going from three to six.
This is a preliminary review. You can just have to take the application in public hearing for the request of, of two-six bedroom, that could be written out.
Yeah. Sorry, nothing about the operation?
Well, there is in a sense, I mean, it, it's, may just be semantics, but as I understand what's going on, the application is for a country inn rather than the previous approval as a bed and breakfast.
That is correct.
So, the country inn provision says up to 40 guests. Typically, that has been reserved for operations that are bigger than, I guess, six, six was the, I forget what the limit was on the, on B and B. So, country inns were generally a category that was intended to be slightly more intensive than a, than a B and B. And I guess the other issue that's been raised in some of the public commentary on this is, is whether there's two categories of country inns, one is for those that are using more than five acres and one that is using less than five acres. So, it may not be different from his point of view in terms of what he's trying to do there, but I think from the, from the administrative standpoint, we are looking at a modified use in this sense. And I do have some questions about that whenever.
Can I clarify a couple things?
Please.
Okay. As I understand, the maximum number of guests or rooms, maybe a better way to put it would be five rooms for a B and B. As I, as I understand.
It's either five or six. I know we've gone back and forth on that.
I believe it's five. I believe it's five. Donna and I have a suite for the sixth bedroom. Our traveling opportunities are going to go as an opportunity to open that room up for leasing. In addition, there is the suite on the far side of the building that can accommodate four guests and two of the other rooms can accommodate up to four guests as well, the rooms are that large. So, we jump above that 12 limit. We jump above that 12 limit of, but we have no intention. I think the other restrictive element is the number of acres would, would put us at limited 16 guests. Is that correct? 16? Maybe 14? Because I know in our original application, I think the way we counted people was 18 rooms, or 18 guests. As somebody pointed out, given the acres that we have, we can only go to 14 or 16. I have no intention of going up that high.
That would be, that would be a maximum.
Yes. Yes.
So, to answer your question, Mr. Henry, it is, it is a slightly configuration because of the scale and the conversion from a B and B to a country inn.
Was this site plan submitted with the parking and everything?
I don't know. I can't recall. Please, there is, yes.
The original application?
For this, no, for this application. Okay. I can ditch one.
I'm just, I, I don't need to interrupt you, because I think you have finished. I just, I guess I'm more of a point of order than anything else. We had tabled this at our last meeting for lack of conclusion from VDOT and also from lack of feedback from the health department. And so, I was just wondering, I don't see where we have received any of that information, so I'm almost really sure why it had been added back to our agenda.
I believe we have.
The VDOT report that's in the packet is dated 9/17 and not been brought to our attention when we met on the 18th. I don't see anything additional from the health department.
I have received other comments from VDOT actually today. They had submitted some information to VDOT that they had requested. And the health department looked at their subject system and approved what's there. They actually have two systems installed that can, will accommodate the capacity of what they're requesting and to them, there's no difference between a B and B and a country inn. I, I double-checked that would match.
Is that in writing and why wasn't it added in the packet?
I do have, I do have an email from her aspect to run the thing, but it was not included, you corrected in the packet.
You also have an engineer study that we hired. You also have a traffic engineers study that we hired and I've submitted that all to Michelle about a week and a half ago.
I've heard comments someplace that your Washington winery in this property is connected.
Yes, they are.
Did you build a road to, to?
No.
It's just connecting on a boundary line, there's nothing else?
We share Christmas Tree Lane on the back end, shares about 1,000 feet of the property line with Clark Lane, or, sorry, with Clark Lane property. So, we put in a footbridge and that's mostly to move farm equipment, a zero-turn gators and the like, because we're doing mowing on both sides of the property.
But vehicles, cars and trucks?
Have not, no.
Could not turn over.
It looks like VDOT is still waiting for additional feedback from you, Mr. Hemmerson?
No, they're not.
Their email says neither the applicant nor their consultant provided a clear and direct response to my comment at one.
I did.
Neither party could provide documentation demonstrating that VDOT previously reviewed the application for a winery on Clark Lane.
I did. And my first, my first note, the conclusion that they're asking there was how I came to a personal conclusion to a moderate, I think it's called moderate vehicle entrance. And I took that from, in my letter that I sent to Michelle, I took that phrase, moderate vehicle entrance, and went back into their own appendix where they said 200 vehicles, 200 entrances per hour. That's the definition. So, I didn't conclude to anything and I, in my letter back, I said, I acknowledge that I did not receive anything from DDOTs. Nobody's received anything from VDOT. I took that conclusion based on my own research.
I guess we don't take your conclusion, would we take VDOT's conclusions?
I hope you take VDOT's conclusions, yes.
But they didn't conclude the same thing you concluded.
Uh, no, they, they asked for a clarification and my, that was my clarification, that the question, if I understand, the one specifically is, where did I come to that conclusion?
I only have a portion of the email, I don't have the email.
Okay.
But it specifically says that they're looking for a response from you.
And I did.
And so, to that end, I don't understand why it's on the agenda this evening if we don't have instruction from VDOT.
Was that, was that the, the email that you received today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I had not seen that.
So, my recollection on our table of this was the part because of the sort of uncertainty around the consideration of the reputation and, you know, my, my rationale for allowing a preliminary review tonight was so that we could have this discussion and sort out where we are. This is still a preliminary review and that's why, that's why it's here and that's why it's on the agenda that we all voted to approve. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Hemmerson? I guess I wanted to ask in terms of the overall operation and this acreage discussion, which I think is going to be a, a discussion on this if it moves forward. How is the, I mean, the, the, again, the, the discussion in the ordinance about whether more or fewer than five acres is used is sort of an odd term, because if we're talking about the building itself, it would never be five acres. So, presumably, there's some understanding that we're using the parcel in some way. Could you comment on whether, you know, are there trails? I mean, you said it's kind of connected to your winery. Is the, is the operation such that your guests to either of these facilities would have access to the remaining property or how, how do you, how does that work?
They can walk in both directions.
And do they routinely?
Routinely, yes, we've had guests there. Do that. We have, in addition, put a footbridge across the creek that's down there that divides the two properties. We have put in a footpath and that's going to be approved as the season comes on next year, we're going to put, put lunch all the way down so that guests can move from one spot to the next.
And to some of the comments made earlier, I think the, from my perspective, the way to look at this is that, I mean, we can consider our, I think, our thoughts on the, the compliance history of this property, but what's before us, I believe, is essentially a new application under a different use category. And so, I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to, you know, request the same kind of information we would in terms of site plan and other clarifying and supporting documents as part of this application. Mr. Henry, would you like to attempt to move us on this?
I would like to comment a little bit. It seems to me that there are two other aspects of this application which would need to be looked into. One is, as a country inn, it seems to exceed the boundary between tourist home or bed and breakfast and hotel with the idea of the fire safety and that kind of thing. and breakfast and hotel with the idea of the fire safety and that kind of thing that is required for a hotel. I think that would need to be looked into and verified. And the other is, if this is going to be used as a country inn, how does that relate to its use as part of the winery business? So it almost seems that we're getting into a double-barrelled situation where it is a one plus another use, which would have a bearing on the traffic flow and the use of the property for beyond the aspect of the inn. And so it seems to me that would need to be clarified and discussed.
It has in our engineering study. We had a traffic engineer and he's taken that information and it should be in the study that I sent, talked about to you the other, about a week and a half ago. And he's taken all of that into account. Existing traffic on the high, on the, for the household, the six-bedroom B and B and the winery. And that's in that report.
The wells and associate?
That's correct.
Okay, that is supposed to go in the docs.
And just to be clear, I think it probably is, but these are separate parcels, correct? Although they're adjacent, the winery is a different parcel than the country inn parcel.
That is correct.
So they're both accessed on the same road?
No, they're not.
Oh, they're not accessed on the same?
No, they're not. The Little Washington Winery's access point is through Christmas Tree Lane, which is backed by Rose Hill Patch. And the inn gets access through Clark Lane.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Is that, sorry if I muddled that. Is that clear?
And the Wells engineering study was specifically on the reception of routes 211 and Clark Lane and the impact there.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So the provision that says that if you want a country inn, it has to, the density has to be limited to eight units at two-person occupancy, which is the maximum, 16 for each 25 acre. So your request for six units still exceeds that. Sorry, you're still applying for?
Eight units.
I'm sorry, eight units.
Eight units.
You're saying 18 guests?
That's correct, but it's not 18 guests, it's 16. Based on that number right there, it's eight units times two is 16 guests, given the magnitude of the acres that we have there. That's how we came to the 16 number.
I thought in your application, you said that several of those bedrooms are actually four-person.
That is correct. And therefore we could get to 18. We could get to 18 in my original application and some, I believe you even clarified and said, no, it can be, the maximum limit could be 60. That's fine. We'll limit it to 16.
So that's how you're, you're going to change your application?
I can't, yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The septic is a five-bedroom septic, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I saw you had a soil scientist who suggested that it could be formal based on your use.
That's correct.
And I think part of that was based on just weekend use.
There's a variety of other things. The, the Health Department has certain legacy systems that they have to deal with. So question number one that I received from the engineer was, all of your toilets, 1.5 tonne toilets? Yes, they are. Is there going to be any laundry done? No, there's not. Is there going to be any cooking done? No, there's not. So there's a whole array of other variables there that came into play into the conclusions that he reached.
Right, I saw that. And it was, I understood it. I'm not sure if I agree with it completely, but I understood it. The other question I have is that the traffic study, it seems to be that's based on VDOT and their entrance, what they permit. They have no interest once you're off there right of way.
That's correct.
So it does, I have to say, it does seem to me that it's a bit burdening the right-of-way a bit to have 100 and whatever it is, trips a day. I forgot where it was, but as a estimate, that's a lot of trips on a 30-foot right.
I'm not sure I agree with that estimate either.
I mean, there's deliveries, there's all kinds of things going on. But I think you're estimating something like under 200, as I recall, 200 vehicle trips a day.
The, where I came to that 200 vehicle trips a day is from VDOT's own appendix five, where they talk about a moderate use intersection, being able to accommodate up to 200 vehicles per day. I've never said that we would do 200 vehicles per day.
Yeah, you're, I know you're presuming less.
Well, please let me get 200 vehicles per day.
Well, then I think you would be certainly overburdened. All they care about is their entrance. They don't care about the driveway.
That's correct.
And you may, whoever has to share the driveway. So that, I see that as an issue that needs to be thought about. I guess one of my main points right now would be, I would want to look carefully at the septic system and carefully at the entrance and the way. That's all I have.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Henry, you look like you might be hearing up for one.
You could say a lot from this soil work that C N W, you know, we could have took a lot from that. So necessarily know that we should buy into this argument that based upon occupancy of this and that.
Perhaps the more important document is the document that the Health Department sent over after I had received that information.
Which I believe was for a six-bedroom.
That's correct.
It would be at two people per bed.
That's correct.
Could be 12.
That's correct. Right. 16 maximum is based on the calculation here.
Well, that was just, I think that just had to do with zoning.
That's correct.
That would be the maximum.
Yeah, no, but I think Med has seen, I know Med has seen that, that engineer's report, but she submitted something to you that says we're fine with 16.
Again, I just, the commission, I guess it's sort of.
I think the septic, I guess we need a site plan to show that's, at least.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we have a range of, typically what we do on these preliminary, I know there's some extenuating circumstances here because it's been permitted another way and there's other activities, but if we just look at it in terms of the application for the load use, I think we, you know, we can, we could table it again and request some of the additional information or we could forward it with the, with the idea of a hearing and the requirement of getting additional information. I think we've done all those things. Doesn't sound like we're ready to forward this by anybody's stretch, so I'd entertain a motion within that framework.
I'm right on the line or whatever. I postponed it or we'll give a site plan or draw a move. I'm right on the edge, so what, what, Mr. Bird, what, go out, call it a pushover.
I didn't mean to know that we need to take any action. We've already tabled it. Well, we haven't untabled it.
I think we did untable it by having it on the agenda and having it tonight, but.
Well, I would be inclined to table it in favor of the additional site plan and also additional reporting from VDOT that's conclusive. And also pending the turnout of the hearing, VCA.
I take that as a motion?
I would make a motion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, got a motion due, made and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything else? I think you touched on the points. There's no further discussion. All in favor, we see what we're saying. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, so we'll see you potentially at any team. Ladies and gentlemen, given the time that we're about to get into the cell towers, we're supposed to take five minutes to get to the three hours. PWSF unit 190802, the CWS Scrabble Tower site's location. It was tabled from our September 19 meeting and extended to this time due to the kind of conditions of the need to bring them between the board supervisors and applicant with respect to the established toward the time of this review. Ms. Summers, would you like to tee this up?
Sure. Again, CWS has proposed to construct a new tower at that number 564C. In August, at the regular meeting, the commission had their preliminary review of the application. The commission held a public hearing on September 21st, in which paid applications as the chairman's ever tabled. On October 8th, CWS had a letter stating this date mandated 150-day shot clock and additional 60 days. The agreement was contingent upon the planning commission not taking any action at their regular, until the regular November meeting, excuse me, to remain on schedule and to provide maximum flexibility to the board. The planning commission can render a decision tonight or at their next meeting on December the 8th, 10th. Again, the applicant for this has requested waivers of microwave dishes shall not be used. They requested a waiver on the landscape requirements, a waiver for use permits not signable, site access road, and they took away their request of waiver for bonding. Again, the planning commission has already held the public hearing, enclosed it, so it's up for discussion amongst the commissioners tonight.
Thank you, Representative Data. Do you have anything to add before we start?
Hope McCrory can read wireless structures. Nothing much to add, assuming that everyone had a chance to review and digest the letter that we sent. I won't go through it unless you want me to, but.
We'll have questions, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, the most important thing in the letter were the modifications that we're proposing to this application. Just for now, direct discussion to the Scrapples. So we did proper change in the structure from a lattice to a monopole, painting it in some way to help camouflage the structure and help blend in the surroundings, paint color to be determined. And we also waived the bonding requirement. We eliminated our request to waive bonding. So we would offer to provide a tower removal bond for this tower.
Thank you. I believe this, this application is in my district, so I will refer to comments. I'd like to hear from my colleagues. These are always very tough decisions that we face. These are, these structures are visible, there's no denying that. I do think it is incumbent on us to strongly consider the visual impacts of these towers. At the same time, despite some of the, and I know this is not a universal feeling, I think it's pretty clear that there's a pretty compelling public need for this kind of service and the idea of waiting for another technology or considering the possible future extension of fiber optics that cover the same sort of ranges, allowing you not sufficiently responsive to the need. We're talking now about the Scrapple Tower site. I do have some questions. I gather that the main reason for asking for the waiver for the screening was because of an existing tree structure. Is that, is that what's going on there? So I guess my concern about that is that there's no guarantee that the tree structure would be there. And we want to eliminate the requirement for screening, only to have the natural tree boundary removed and then have no screening. So that is a concern of mine. I feel like that could be addressed in some way, but is the, is the existing, is the tree screening, natural screening on the same parcel? Can you comment at all on its longevity as a screening?
There is some, I mean, well, it's a, it's a.
If you have some visuals that you have of that.
Is that, I don't know if you have the PowerPoint on that one before. It's a, it's a heavily wooded, 26-acre parcel. The parcel is heavily wooded throughout. The, as you can see there, the, not all of the trees that will ultimately buffer the structure are on the property, but the trees that will buffer the fence compound, I think, will remain. Those are the trees that are going to be effective at screening what's on the property inside the fence are the trees that are right surrounding the fenced in compound. I talked to our construction manager, because I think that concern had come up before, and he said, there's, you know, we have a setback from the property line and there are trees intervening in the property line and the fence, and those trees will not be disturbed.
So in waiving this, you wouldn't have any objection to our trying to craft that in a way that would continue to be some kind of visual screening, whether it be natural or otherwise?
I think that would be workable. We have to confirm it with the property owner.
I understand.
The other issue with landscaping on this parcel is, and I'm not an expert at this, but I'm getting this again from my construction manager, who is, you know, there's, I think he said there are pine trees and the mountain laurel. That's all that's really growing on this property. If you try to plant with a typical landscaping buffer, it's probably not going to survive with the tree canopy that's already there.
Right. I'm in favor personally of the natural buffer, but if we waive the requirement entirely, there's nothing that is sure that the natural buffer will stay. That's my.
Another point that he brought up is that, because there was concern particularly with regard to the closest two houses just over the property line, and the way the topography is, the tower and its, and its ground space is actually set down about, he said, 20 or 25 feet from the level of those properties. And so he called it something I've never heard of, Ufala or something like that, but in any case, he thought that would effectively minimize the view or mitigate the danger from those two close houses.
The ground device, the ground.
Right, because again, all we're talking about is landscaping, it's not the tower. We're talking really about what's on the ground, the eight-foot fence and what's inside it.
And with respect to the waiver for the back haul, microwave hauls, update me if you would, because I recall we discussed this issue with the Sperryville site. We ended up, I think, doing that on a temporary basis because your ultimate intention is to connect to the fiber when it isn't available. Is that still the base for you deliberating on that plan?
Yes, we had a long discussion about this.
And I'm sorry, I was.
Right, no, I'm good. The carriers that will install in the tower, they're the ones who have the need for the fiber in order to break service up. Their strong preference is to use fiber for the telecommunications back haul. That if fiber was there or it was cost-effective to bring it there, that's absolutely what would happen. And I think we had a representative from Shentel, the provider here at the last meeting, she was talking about how they maintain a list of all their sites that, you know, are currently on that, on microwave dish and don't have back haul and they're constantly looking to switch those over when they can. So that, that would happen if it can. With regard to Sperryville. With regard to Sperryville, we actually are moving forward with getting fiber to that. Comcast has finished all their trenching and there is fiber now available to that location. Somebody has to turn it on, you know, request service, a provider or the county when they install their emergency services equipment, but that's actually happened. It was able to happen relatively quickly because there was already fiber in the town of Sperryville, so the run to get it from where it was up to the site was cost prohibitive. That's not the case with these two sites, there's nothing anywhere close by. So that's the downside, and that's one of the reasons we want to request the waiver, because we can't predict exactly when there's going to be fiber available. The good news is that the Scrabble site is relatively close to 522, so getting fiber from 522 to the site would not be cost prohibitive, and Rappahannock Electric is in the process of deploying fiber throughout the county along 211, 522. And a couple months ago, I spoke to a project manager who said that that particular stretch, 522, is on there, scheduled for 2020. So once that backbone is in place, then the carriers can reach out to the providers, to the Comcast or the Verizon, or whoever actually is going to be the service provider, and ask them to connect the 522 fiber to the site. But again, with regard to waiver, we just don't know what the time is.
So, the question, Mr. Bird, you have some questions or thoughts?
I feel that the, there is an unnecessary and unreasonable resistance to cell towers and cell phones in this county. They aren't particular, they are not attractive to look at, but when you compare them to the general telephone poles, electric lines, and telephone wires that are generally available, they are nowhere near as omnipresent or as visually oppressive. And I feel, I am operating somewhat out of ignorance here in that I don't feel confident or able to read the landscape and understand where the necessary or the optimal placement of towers is, depending on not only the ability to access it, but also for the transmission of this line of site radio waves. But in addition to the availability of a willing property owner to support the cell tower on the property, and this is a complex and difficult concatenation of events, I would call it keeping a lot of possums up the tree. And that it is something that when we are presented with a, what seems to be a usable plan by the tower constructors, and we then, for whatever reasons, real, imaginary, frivolous or otherwise, don't accept it, we are putting ourselves in a situation where it will take somewhere between two-plus years to reinstate a, another proposition that we could then look into and wouldn't necessarily know if it were any better, any worse, or workable than the present one. And so, I feel that given the very reasonable, very necessary and important use that these towers provide, that the best compromise in a situation like this is to go with what we have as opposed to try to find a marginally superior situation that may or may not be any superior. And as far as I'm concerned, we are, it is, tends to encourage frivolous and, I feel, irresponsible activity to only impede.
Thank you, Mr. Bird, your comments by me remind me of a couple things related to some comments that we've heard about more proactive planning and kind of design on this. I would note two things. I know, I think this was back in the time of the original sprint towers, there was a study, we did, the gentleman's engineer's name is Mr. Feige, and he did do a proactive study, and I believe one of his primary conclusions was, well, the ideal place for a tower would be up at the Red Oak Fire Tower. And that sort of made certain amount of sense from the standpoint of where you'd get the most reach, but the property owner had no interest in having a tower up there. So, I think you raise a good point with respect to our limited ability or inclination to sort of dictate where these towers go. The other comment, your comments reminded me of was the, there's some questions about the sort of economic study group, and I believe that is the same sort of stream of activity that ultimately led to the broadband committee, which has sort of ran its course and, you know, came up with some good language, and I think helped us sort of talk about our objective, but from my perspective, despite a fairly noble effort, they did not come out with anything resembling, they waited for us to go forward with respect to this question of how to do this. So, there seems to be a lot of clear indication that many people want to need this, and I think the how and how we do this is the way we do a lot of things in Rappahannock County. We consider market forces, we consider individuals and how they want to use their property, and when those things line up, they come in here and they ask for whatever the proper authorization is to use their property in that manner, and that's what we're here to make tonight. Thank you, Mr. Bird, sorry to interrupt, like, your comments reminded me of those thoughts from earlier. If you're finished, Mr. Bird, do you like to comment?
I wonder if I can ask a question, Michelle, you have a picture again on the Scrabble site? So, the, where the marker is there, so as I recall from your application, you had, you meet your setback of about 200 feet, so you're about a little over 200 feet from the property lines, where your tower, the middle of your tower is over...
It's 110% of the tower.
So, you're right up against the property line, which you've got about 200 feet of, and then you're going to build a 50-foot fence around...
50 by 100, I think, yes, this one.
So you're going to have, you know, I don't know, less than 200 feet for the trees, and then, so that, I mean, it looks like a lot of space there, but to the, those two houses, the white is, I believe, the small Road Jackson lane, and then the two houses are right there.
Correct.
So, from the, you said, if I recall from your application, the distance from the closest house is just about 402 feet. So from the yellow to the house is about 402 feet, and so from there to 522, which is the yellow, is, you know, maybe 1,000 feet, so...
I think it was 850.
850.
I mean, that, to what we measured is the closest one on Jackson Lane.
And to 522.
Right, yeah.
So, majority of the trees that are actually acting, are going to act as buffer from those two houses in 522 are actually on either those, the property of those two houses or the Jackson House assisted living, which I'm not sure if that's it right there, but not on your property. So do you have any kind of arrangement with those property owners to protect those trees? Or... And do you have, just an update, I know you ask me this every time you come in here, but on, you know, where the status of folks connecting to the Boston Sperryville towers is?
Boston is really close, and I hope the next time I'm here talking to someone, I'm saying Boston site's on there. T-Mobile is the first provider that's going on there, all their equipment is installed, the exception of their microwave dish that they need for the back hall. They had to get a separate permit for that from Culpeper, and so that delayed them a little bit, but they, their goal is to have that site on air by year-end, so it counts in their year-end numbers, and they're very close. Sperryville, nothing is happening right now. T-Mobile, again, has a lease with us at that location, they wanted to finish Boston first. All the carriers are, there's a, you can read about this in the paper, there's a real shortage of tower crews and tower climbers because there's so much activity in this space with all the 5G preparation that's going on and all the small cell deployment, and so, you know, they're balancing their tower crews and they're focused on Boston site right now. The other really good piece of information that I put in the letter that I sent to you is that, out of the blue, Verizon Wireless contacted us and is starting the process of negotiating a lease with us to go on Sperryville. And the other really good thing is when Verizon signs a lease or when T-Mobile is ready to forward, the fiber's there, so that's going to make it all that much easier for them and give them more of an incentive to prioritize that site because the fiber's in place, so...
Funny, while you're on this topic, I believe in the letter you mentioned something about progress with Virginia broadband?
Well, Virginia broadband is installed at the Boston site, has been for quite some time, and they have customers, I don't know what their count is or how many rooftops they're servicing in that area, but they have been installed on that tower properly for at least a year.
But there's no plans or negotiation or agreement for Virginia broadband on either of these proposed towers?
They would like to go on both of these towers.
Like to go?
Yes. We have not signed a lease with them because they would prefer not to sign a lease until they know there's going to be a tower built.
I'm sorry, everyone.
No, no, thank you for that clarification. So, I guess, you know, first of all, I'd like, I'd like to thank CWS because I feel like you've come in and offered us an application in good faith, and, you know, you're offering us something that meets your business needs, and you're offering a service to the county as well, and I do think you've worked in good faith and tried to give us things that you think will meet our needs as well as yours, and I appreciate that. I also, on my part, would like to thank the community for their input, I feel like we've gotten a lot of letters, we've got a lot of letters and had a lot of testimony and talked to a lot of people individually, and I know I'm not the only one, and I, you know, there's not a consensus on this, and the reason there's not a consensus is we have two conflicting needs. We have cellphone and internet services which require infrastructure, and then we have our beautiful unspoiled, you know, scenic rural county that will suffer from the placement of large infrastructure, and so we have to balance these two, but I don't think they're incompatible. I think we have seen many places in the county where they're quite compatible, we have a silo structure at the corner that most people don't even know is a cellphone tower, and most people have no objection to that. And we have, near Van Nu, we have a tower that's placed up against the mountain and screened, and nobody ever sees that, it took me years before I knew there was a cellphone tower there. So I think there are certainly ways to make our need for cellphone service and an applicant's desire to provide that to us and meet their business needs to make those marry and marry well. I have concerns that there are still outstanding issues on these towers based on just regular zoning and these things and primarily visibility, and I think that's where a lot of our concerns arise. I know, you know, maybe some of our adjacent counties don't even feel they need to be as careful as we do, there are counties close to us who want to put up big subdivisions, but that's not Rappahannock County. You know, it's not what we came here for, and it's not really what anybody here wants. So, that puts us in a position, I think, of, you know, kind of having to go the extra mile sometimes. And so, we need, if we want to keep what we have, to be willing to insist on and sometimes live with ourselves, some limitations on what we can build and where it can be built. And so that's the tension we experience here. And I, again, am very appreciative at the compromises CWS has been willing to make, but I feel like they probably have it gone as far as I think they need to go in this situation. I think on the Eldon site, again, there are examples in the county of things that have been properly screened or that have been made visually compatible with the adjacent circumstances, and I wish we could look at some of those a little bit more closely for the Eldon site. For the Scrabble site, I know it hasn't received quite as much attention because it doesn't look as visible to people because there's already a lot of existing coverage there, but that's a conservation district, a forested conservation district, and if that buffering is not protected, you have 800 feet within that 522, you've got a few residential houses there, and that tower or monopole with its fencing is going to be the most visible thing for, you know, if you come down the main stretch of roads, the scenic highway from Culpeper to Sperryville and Woodville. So I think we've managed on our other major interfere, major roadway coming into the county from Warrington to have cellphone towers that fit, and I think that should be our goal in this other, you know, very conspicuous roadway that we have, to make sure that fits. I think, I appreciate greatly that you've come down on the height at Woodville, I know not everybody thinks that's a great idea, but you have done it for, because we were concerned about visual impact, but I recognize that initially you thought that height just couldn't be a compromise item, but I think the tower at Scrabble still will be, even if the trees are maintained, will still raise, you know, a good 100 feet probably above the tallest tree there, and I think the visual impacts can be very significant there. So, you know, I don't think we're quite where we need to be on doing what we need to do for our county to maintain that balance.
Thank you.
Well, I know this is the hearing on the Scrabble Tower, or not hearing, the preliminary, or is it just a review? But I did want to take a minute and talk about something which I believe is germane to application, which has been our relationship with CWS to date. When Sperryville Tower was approved by the Board of Supervisors, the motion and the approval used the exact words, I believe, that we used tonight, Hope, which is color to be determined. When we got our contract from CWS, the color was, I think it's called blueberry haze, which looks very white, doesn't look very blue. It was unfortunately executed with blueberry haze in it, and that's why we have a bluish-white tower now. We worked in that option of camouflaging because it was important to us and because CWS led us to believe that it was possible to do. And so, I guess, before I renew my relationship with CWS, I would like to know if they would like to make good on painting the Sperryville Tower to reflect the vote of the Board of Supervisors and be a camouflage tower, blend in with the surroundings. I hear about this constantly from my constituents. I don't have an answer because my motion was correct. And that's important to me, that the person that we're moving forward with, the entity we're moving forward with to do business abides by the vote of the Board of Supervisors. So, I have that question, and I know that you can't probably answer that tonight, Hope, but that's important to me, that if we are to build any more towers with CWS, that they make the Sperryville Tower right first.
Can I comment?
I think I have the floor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me know when you want to.
That will be up to the chair. Initially, from my constituents, I consistently hear about the delays in the service of the installation. It now sounds like we don't have any kind of timeline. There have been delays and delays, and, you know, people, people, if they're going to give up something like their pristine scenery, they want the service delivered, and I think that's a realistic expectation. And I think that's a realistic expectation. So I just wanted to echo that as well because I care about it all the time and rightfully I have concerns, I don't think it affects this so much as the other application that we're going to discuss tonight about the changes to the application. I think the legal phrase, I'm kind of harpinging back to discussions we had regarding Airbnb's, that if advertised one way and substantial changes are made in the process and it's not really advertised, I believe the legal term is void ab initio, which means it will be void from the start, it won't, it won't be valid. So I would want to hear from the county attorney whether we're able to move forward with these changes or if we need these changes to make the proposals void ab initio. And I do believe that they need to move together as a pair because they are proposed as a network. I think that's all I have at this time.
Sure. On your second point, I'm not sure, Ms. Smith, if you were prepared to do that. I know there was some work, I don't know if we got to a definitive answer, but my, from the exchange I was able to have this afternoon on this question of would a new hearing be required? My understanding is that the, because the tower is shortened, thereby presumably reducing its impacts, that we are not compelled to have another hearing. But that certainly, given, in my view at least, that there appear to be trade-offs between service and shortening tower, I believe we're certainly within our rights to, and within the timing that we have, if we were so inclined to have another, another hearing on that. So that's, I don't know, Ms. Smith?
No, I totally understand that, and I can see that point. I would also say that by decreasing the height, you're probably increasing the need for additional towers by reducing the coverage area, and that's a substantial factor as well.
Yeah. And again, I'm not, I don't know if there was a definitive answer, but I can share what I had learned from what was done this afternoon on this question.
And I know that there may be more questions and answers coming out of our discussions this evening, but I did want to also just mention, I noted CWS, I noted that you all had monopines in your list of assets in Virginia. And I was just wondering, I think I saw one on your listing. It just seemed like to me that that would be a more appropriate fit at a reduced height in particular for this location. If we're talking about.
Do you want to ask that question?
I don't know that, I don't think the people are here that can make that deal tonight, but to me that would be something that I believe may mitigate some of the concerns with this location. I don't think it's appropriate for the Eldon Tower, but for this heavily wooded location at a reduced height, it may be an option. The, the presence of this tower over the neighboring houses is not something we've done to neighbors before.
Sure. So it's okay, I would like to respond to, I think you had something you wanted to say in response to the question about this Sperryville painting?
Yeah. I guess just to express where we're coming from on that, and this, I will, we will consider whether we can offer to paint that tower. Let's just, that will be something we'll consider, no matter how we got to this point. But, you know, just, just so that you know, I mean, I don't know where the confusion was, but we could paint it any color or a multitude of colors. It doesn't matter to us. We, we, it doesn't cost us any more money, it doesn't change anything from our perspective once we've agreed to paint it. Painting a tower adds some cost to it. But once we've agreed or, like in the case of Woodville and Scrabble, you know, offered to paint it, that, then at that point, we don't care. We got to the blueberry haze color because, and again, I don't remember exactly how the conversation went, but Board of Supervisors, we knew there was a lot of concern about the boushe of the closest neighbor, the Luthies. They're up on a hill, they are, you know, the consensus or the, I guess, discussion was that they would look at the tower from, from, you know, against the skyline. What could we do to help, you know? And so the discussion was, let's paint it, you know, they're the most impacted, they're the closest neighbor, they're the ones that are very concerned about. Let's paint it a color that makes sense for them. From that point forward, we chose a color which we've used in other locations. I don't know, there's a tower near the Pepsi plant on 29 between Warrington and Northern Virginia. That's, that's painted that exact same color, and it looks great there. We sent that color into somebody, the building here, the building department, I don't know exactly because I'm not involved in that, who, who on this end approves that. There was a, there was a process where we got approval from somebody that works for Rabbit Hennessy County for that color, and we proceeded to paint it. So I'm just, there wasn't any intention to, you know, not do what the Board of Supervisors asked. In the contrary, we were, we thought we were doing exactly what we were asked, and we misunderstood that. You know, I apologize, but I, that's how it transpired from my recollection.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, anything?
Yeah, that was fine, thank you.
Mr. Collier.
Oh, boy. This has been a very difficult thing for me. I got on the planning commission because I really want to contribute to the county. I feel like I owe a lot to the county. I've lived here, had my life here, and I feel as part of the, as part of the planning commission, my job is to preserve the comprehensive plan and to say, the comprehensive, if the comprehensive plan says this, then that's what it should be. I, I'm also deeply swayed by the, by the EMS people who say they need this. And that's a very, that's a, that's a strong argument. The, I have, some people will tell me, you know, more people will have accidents because they'll be texting while they're driving. Maybe, I don't know. Obviously, I'm not an expert on cell towers. I took my, I didn't bring it tonight, but I had my topo map and I looked at all the topo's and I looked at all where all the loins went and how you could get service and how these towers were, where they were projected, and, you know, they, they have the opportunity, I don't, I think with the lowered tower, it probably won't, but if it was at the original height or if it was a little further south, it would have the opportunity to project into Russell Middle Road. If you could get enough on, closer to the mountain, it would project, it'd be hidden even better and it would project down that way. I can't ask for those things. It's not anything that we can ask for as, as a, as a commission. I don't think we can, we can't demand without you doing.
Sorry, Mr. Collier, can I just clarify, that comment was related to the Scrabble board?
I'm sorry, I take.
It's okay, I know we're, I understand it's hard to keep separate, but I just want to.
Let me go back to Scrabble. Let me go back to Scrabble.
You're a player, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
You're right, you're right. I regret that. The, I stand corrected. I'd like to address Ms. Ishi's comment about the forest. The, I presume that you'll have a 50 by 100 fence, you'll probably have another 75 feet of clearance, cleared land for tree falls and things like that, you know? So you'd be right up to the wood line? Okay. But that provides a little more security there. The.
That's a tough call.
And I'm, I'm finding that, I was up on this, this crisis property when the balloon flew, and there's a lady who, whether you believe what she says or not, cares very deeply, and we're not allowed to even take that into consideration, but that tower sticks up like 150 feet right across the road from our way up in the air. Should be the most affected by the people there. I, you know, if you go up on the mountain and you look down, well, it's, it's going to be, it'll be pretty much fallen to the same ground. I think screening is important. Mr. Davies said that screening is important in his presentation, and said it was very I'm conflicted, I'm very trying to decide what is the right thing for the county. And I think that it's very possible that the right thing would be to, to look for something better. It's very possible it's, it's to go right now. So that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Mr. Henry?
I'm fortunate to be, yes, the only person here that is set to do all the county equipment of, you know, cell towers for Rabbit Hennessy County, going back to the initial seven about 10 years ago. And looking at the staff recommendations up here, number one, disaffirmable, shall not leave or discriminate between applicant or provider of equipment or services. And this tower here at 199 feet is compatible with all the towers we have. I think this tower is wonderfully screened, it's in an isolated location, well off the state road, has evergreens around it, 100 feet, 200 feet of evergreens, whatever it is, between this property and the property line and the other person's property. I think it's a very isolated location and we're very fortunate to have Jackson Lane there, which provides the majority of access to the property, very low access road will have to be built into the property, so limited environmental impact by access to the property. I don't think people will notice it very much at all going down 522. I think it will probably be one of the best disguised locations in the county. And it goes to a monopole, you know, a monopole, a silo, they're both manmade objects. When you look at these silos and with the differential in colors, because of materials, it doesn't really look at a silo like a silo. And people that are coming from Northern Virginia, I have heard them say, you know, is that a water tower outside of Little Washington? So they don't know what a silo is, they don't know what a silo is, and see this structure and they think it's a water tower. So, you know, I think it's better to have a manmade object that, I don't know, whatever it is, a base three B diameter or whatever versus being a silo that's, you know, 25 feet in diameter. And if you ever have to take it down, it would be much easier to take down that monopole and this larger manmade structure. I think it's a correct location. This is an incremental process, bringing cell service to Rabbit Hennessy County, CWS, you know, there's no business sense in building a tower unless you've got people on it. And they don't make money until there's companies are located on it, checks don't come into them until there's people on it. So of course they want people on it as soon as possible, but there's logistics in this day and time, everything from government approvals to materials being delivered, to contractors being able to put the stuff up, there's delays. And, you know, they don't want delays, but we don't want delays, but there's delays. So I'm in favor of it at 199 feet. I think the screening and the request they put in, on the screening is correct. I'm all in favor of the Scrabble tower passing. And I think it's equal to the other towers to be approved. And, you know, there's been issues all over the county where you've got towers and then, you know, there's a tower outside of Little Washington, you make issue of this, does this affect there on the town? There hasn't been any. You've got towers on Masses Corner, Bend Venu, all these locations. And as an appraiser, I've never documented where a tower has diminished the value of a property. So, and after time, my mother had a property in Mount Johnson, this Centel, had a tower 20 feet from her property line, and that silo must be 300 feet tall and it's big. It would be Mount Johnson, it would grass behind the hot sauce plant, that's, that's the tower of property to the north of my mother's property. And it's been there for 15 years, and believe it or not, we don't notice it anymore. So that's the way it looks.
Ms. Henry, on that last point, I just want to revisit something that Ms. Ishi said about the Bend Venu and the, and the Washington silo. I think you're right that those towers are pretty well suited and they're, you know, we've kind of come to accept them. I will say though, and I think it's relevant to our conversation tonight, there is certainly opposition to their site for some of the same reasons we're talking about these. You know, Bend Venu, I know I personally was concerned because it isn't always backdroped by the mountains. There's a certain stretch of 211 where you see above the mountain, and that was a particular concern of mine that I kind of come to, to, to accept. And I think the question of the, Mr. Henry, he could probably comment on the, on some of the concerns that were raised about, about the silo. So I do think there is an element of, and this doesn't justify this particular tower, but I do think it reflects the fact that it's a little hard to anticipate how these things will play out, and there is an element of getting accustomed to them. Ms. Smith, I think you, you raise a very interesting point about the repainting. That's, that was, it's not something I had anticipated, but I, I'm wondering, and I'm not sure if we can answer this, but I, I would be perfectly fine with a, an approval contingent on the applicant agreeing to repaint the sign. I don't know if that's within our rights to do or not, but I would certainly, although I agree that it really wasn't their mislead or misconduct, but in terms of that contribution, I don't know. Do you have a comment on that? I know it's not really, might as well understand your reaction with such a notion, what do we think about doing it?
I said a few minutes ago, we wouldn't consider it.
You know, Gary, I think that's something that should be taken up with the Board of Supervisors here. I think we can make them a recommendation on this, and Ms. Smith, she can deal with this at the board meeting. I think that's.
That's a good point.
I think women on this thing.
Okay. Our, our recommendation could certainly be that if we're, if we're so inclined to recommend approval, we could do so contingent on.
Our testimony has been very, our evidence has been on record, and we have messengers here to the board. I think that's clear, let's do it.
I understand. I'm also trying to think about getting a vote on this thing that is not, that they might, might proceed. So I guess what I was.
I just, I'd rather not see something put on it that could be potentially discriminatory, out of ordinary, that could be litigated, you know? Let, let somebody above us make that turn based along with the county attorney.
I see you, I see you. Well, I appreciate the challenges and the difficulties of this decision. I know, I know none of us do this lightly. This is why this job is, is hard. I don't think there's ever one of these that doesn't adversely impact certain people more than others. And there's no, no giving around sympathies on that, but I guess, I would, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I guess I would first defer to my colleagues if anyone else would be inclined to make a motion.
Gary, when we approved first seven, this, this place was packed, and we went on to 2:00 in the morning, and everyone, I think, was approved, six to one, everyone, where you go. And we went right through them and approved them, and it was a very difficult decision, but what we did, and it's just something we need to address.
Are you prepared to make a motion, sir?
Gary, can I just make another statement?
Can I just make another statement? I appreciate that. And I will say too, I really appreciate the longevity experience of some of our Moises and members of the planning commission, and I guess the most I can bring to that is that my longevity as a member of this county, my family has been here for probably 60 years in some way or another, and, and, you know, myself, like many others, have invested, you know, our lives here now, and we've given up what we have in other places to be here. And so that's what I can bring to this, for what it's for. And I will say that our ordinance says relating to telecommunications facilities, that it's, we strive to locate facilities in areas and in such a manner as to minimize their adverse impact on the creation of a convenient, attractive, harmonious community and on a property value of forest and agriculture-enforced lands and on the existing use and character of the land. And while the Woodville, excuse me, the Elden Woodville Tower is on a large parcel of property, this is 400 feet from houses, and I, that concerned me. I, maybe the current property owners have complained, but that doesn't change the residential nature of those parcels, and they may not be the only people ever living there. So I don't think it's within the character of the existing uses of the land. And I would also say that we have a provision in our ordinance that requires them to be able to collate, collate, I can't say the word, co-locate three providers, but they come forward with proposing four. And so it's higher than it needs to be, even by our ordinance, even by the things we would normally require. So I still think the height is of a concern. I will also point out that there, I believe there is a provision relating to something called the Spectrum Act that allows, that requires in fact localities to approve an additional 20 feet above the existing level of a, of a tower. So at 199 feet, if that's the approval, they get by right an additional 20 feet, so that would put them up above the 200 feet requirements of the FAA requires for lighting, and which would then probably preempt our code that says you can't put lights on it. So I really think that we need to, to not, to not just blindly approve something at 199 feet. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. So, yeah, for that reason, I think we should allow this application if it's, if it's proven it.
So is that a motion?
I can make a motion. So I would move to recommend this approval of the application for proposed structure of the tower because the location, height, and design do not minimize visibility consistent with the Rapid County Concrete Plan and Rapid County Code. Further, under FCC regulations, if approved, the tower or monopole would be permitted to increase in height by 20 feet, which would further increase the visibility of the facility and potentially conflict with Rapid County Code Section 170 dash 108.4.
Thank you for that.
Can I have the comment about the 20 feet?
Please.
We, we deal with this all the time because pretty much no county that we have built structures, and we built in, I think, 11 or 12 in Virginia, no one wants a lit tower typically. And so that question has come up before when we're proposing 199 feet, and we have, the other counties that we've had this problem with have just put a condition on that the tower not be lit, and it was not preempted by the law.
Has that, do you know if that's been mitigated?
Not to my knowledge, but.
I also know of other counties, for example, Alamo County, that will simply say, if you apply for 199 feet, we'll give you 179, and then you can apply for your 20-foot automatic extension if you want. I mean, I know that some counties do that as well.
Thank, thank you for answering the question, Ms. Ishi. You made a motion, is it clear? Thank you for that. Is there a second?
One second.
You have a motion made and seconded, is there any, any further discussion?
I think that motion, I think it goes against what we have been told by county legislator. I think it violates the state code on the reasons to turn some down. And I think you really, on this kind of implication here again, I think it's a good proceed, I think the applicant's statement against state code, we, I think this goes outside of the state code that we mandated follow.
Well, this is not a disbursed body, so we can link that to the board supervisors, one of the county attorneys present.
I don't think we should give the supervisor something that violates the law. I think it's irresponsible to do a denial of this.
We have a motion and second.
Okay. We had discussion this night.
We are having discussion. I guess I would just, for my part, in respect to the question about the 20 feet, my before leg dealing with that would be to do as you suggested, which is to essentially conditionally approve it at 179. I think we have within our rights the ability to do these things conditionally, or make our recommendations conditionally. But having said that, we do have a motion duly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'm willing, if that's Mr. Henry's concern, to take that portion of the motion off.
I'm not sure that that was directly his concern, that was my concern. But if you, but wait a minute, you, oh, I see. So I'm trying to clear up, but maybe you two could work out whether, what you're doing to address his potential concern.
Yeah, if that was, if that was Mr. Henry's concern.
I think if you go back to Mr. Curry's initial instructions to the planning commission that he sent to us, I guess, 60 days ago, on the basis for denial, if you look at his staff report to us on the code section of Virginia, and your recommendation for denial right now, I think, I think there's conflict. I don't think you have the basis for what you just said to turn this down.
So what I'm suggesting is that the visibility of the tower is the issue, and that, so that I don't believe conflicts with anything that was said in Mr. Curry's email. I think it was addressing that the parts of the 2018 amendments in the code that doesn't allow us to get into the business decisions of the applicant, which I certainly wouldn't want to do. So I don't think this motion addresses that in any way.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do have one.
Please. We're delivering tip five, this is the time to discuss it.
I guess I just do have a question about the availability of owner wireless support structures and, Mr. Curry, but the, I was at, I was at the Boston site the other day, and I thought, I thought it was hot because I had Sprint, I had five bars, but I guess that's, I was told that was probably coming from the dump town. And it, and I had a single old way to scramble, basically. And I guess my question is, if we had this, I, I don't understand, I don't know why you would want to spend money frivolously, but, you know, we don't seem to really have a lot of, lot of data that can show how this goes to scramble, and then, you know, is it, will, will the tower at Boston get them with it? Would be my question.
The question is, is.
Would the, would the Boston tower reach this proposal?
Well, the first book I have heard is now. I was there for the John Jackson Festival, I made phone calls, I went on Facebook, I sent text messages, I had three bars at Clover Hill.
Yeah, I think, I think, and I think what, I mean, he does with the driving, when you're trying to cover the highway. As more people turn into the service, closes down, the cloud closes down. You got 100 people, it's big, but if there's 1,000 people on it, it closes down, the coverage area. It's not the same coverage area all the time, or mushrooms down.
Sorry, Mr. Coler, did you have a question for Ms. Curry?
He asked if the Boston site would cover, to do that question, and we are an infrastructure provider, we're not, we're not a service provider. Chantel, who sent a letter that was attached to the letter that I sent, that you saw, they're the service provider that's believing on these two locations, and they are a Sprint affiliate. We rely on the carriers to tell us what the need is. Again, as you said, and as Mr. Henry has said a few times, there's no economic sense at all, stupidity, for us to build structures that there wasn't a need for, just as it would not make any sense for a carrier like Chantel to install on a structure that they didn't need to be on to provide service there. When the Chantel engineer was here a couple months ago, he talked a lot about sort of the quality of the signal, and, you know, they, they have standards that go beyond, you know, if, if on a certain day when there's no leaves on the trees, I'm standing on this and I can get a signal. They're, they're looking for a different level of quality and reliability and viability for your signal. And they have told us, we need a spot, we need a tower in this approximate location, and we need a tower in this approximate location. And then we went out and tried, as I have gone on at length about, tried to marry all the factors up, the confines and stuff.
I have one more question, Mr. Curry. Before we take this vote, would you like to go back to CWS and see if there are any further points for negotiation with them before we vote this evening?
No, I think we need to vote.
Is there any, is there any further discussion, Commissioner? Okay. We do have a motion duly made and seconded, there's no further discussion. Maybe in the interest, we'll do a roll call vote if I could. Mr. Byrd?
I understand this is a vote to not recommend.
This is a recommendation to deny for the reasons pretty well articulated by Ms. Ishi.
I vote no.
Ms. Ishi?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Coler?
No.
Mr. Henry?
No.
And I also vote no. Sorry, the, the motion made and seconded fails to gain the majority. Would anyone like to try again?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the board supervisors approval of the application as presented at 199 feet with the conditions set forth by the applicant in terms of voluntarily putting forward funding for the removal of the structure.
The backhaul, the microwave.
Yeah, the microwave, I prefer to, that's presented.
So that is, if I understand, are you saying that the, you proposing a timeline on the waiver, the microwave, until such a time that the fibers no longer? Okay, thank you. And if I could ask for a clarification, would you be willing to modify your motion to address the question of assuring the buffer in the event that the trees be removed, the natural buffer be removed, that some sort of buffer be maintained?
The only control they have is, is over the buffer on the property. I'm sure they can talk to their landowner, Mr. Johnson, and have them understand him that it's a green area outside, so that the buffer, they can only address the buffer on the property where they have the lease, they can't address the adjacent property.
I understand that, but to the extent that the reason they're asking for waivers, my understanding is that they're, they're kind of relying on the buffer on the adjacent property. So I guess my, my question.
I think the subject property provides enough buffer.
But not, not as they don't.
But if they, if they get.
To get the waiver, they're not compelled to maintain, is my point, I understand.
Well, but if they get an agreement, agreement that the, that the landowner is going to maintain the green area, where he will not cut the existing buffer, then there's no need for that.
There's nothing they're compelled to do that. My point is.
In the event, so in the event that the buffer, the subject property, property is eliminated, enabled, next state.
Should buy it a vegetative screen of the base structure. You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Have the motion on the table.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just make a point, I appreciate where you're going on this, that other jurisdictions I am aware of have required that an applicant in a situation somewhat similar to this obtain an easement, a buffer easement from adjacent landowners as a condition of permit, so that they're assured that the, the vegetation, this active and service of buffer is protected, and that's just something that runs with the permit.
I think it's fine to waive, presented, this is a very, very shielded area, very isolated, I think it's going to be the most isolated tower we've had in all the county, and we've got two houses back there, they have not raised an issue, they have not come, they have not voiced it, the, any concern. So I think we've got a wonderful situation for a good location for this tower, and I think we're barking up a tree that doesn't have a conden or a possible.
It would seem to me that the neighboring landowners would have more incentive to keep the buffer than anybody. And for, this seems curious.
Unless I missed it, I would recommend that we amend it, it would be 179 foot.
Mr. Henry, he's made the motion presumably with that consideration in mind.
124 extension, they can do 10% or 20 feet.
Perhaps, would it be of interest to you, Mr. Henry, to hear about the applicant, how they would deal with that?
Again, how would you deal with that?
I don't know. I've, we've not ever had to deal with that before. I mean, what, how, I mean, we wouldn't want to build it at 199, you know.
Well, I guess the question is, have you, have you been through the process of whatever the spectrum rule that allows you to do 20%?
No, we have not.
We have not been through that, because I guess what we're, what we're, the notion that.
I mean, it does exist, I'm not questioning that.
Can I put in information at my name, Mr. Chairman? When we did the approval of the Sperryville Tower, we did specify it for 199 with the specification also that it never be lit.
Correct. And I'm, we're fine with that.
And I think it's.
That to me is a simpler solution, because otherwise we've got to go back through this process to get our, you know, new building, I don't know how.
I understand.
I revise my motion to say that recommend approval at the 199 feet, no light on the, on the tower. The top two.
I believe that is a condition of our ordinance, and I don't want to speak from Ms. Ishi, but I believe her point is that the federal or the state law allows for 20% increase, there may be a question of litigation as to whether that's enforceable.
I believe what you're doing there, we're going, we're going.
Yeah, there are certainly jurisdictions that are, that are hedging in this manner, but we have a motion.
So to recap it, 199, no lights forever, wave the landscape and subject to a condition that in the event that the upper, on the subject property disappears between the tower and the property line, the landscape and buffer will be installed.
And the, and definitely you said that the microwave backhaul is until such time this fiber is within.
Yes.
Is replaced.
Yes.
Is that not how we wrote it, Michelle?
It was how we.
Okay, so.
Good, that's.
Well, I'm just so.
Other than the buffer on the ground.
Right.
If that disappears, you got to put it back.
Understood.
Okay, I believe we have a motion duly seconded. Mr. Byrd, you're still second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I would like the county attorney to give us an opinion on the 179 versus 199 height and lighting issue.
Well, I believe that is something that could be...
As it comes to the board, I don't agree with what's happening now. Correct.
Any, any further discussion? Well, since I picked on Mr. Byrd last time, I'll go first this time. Vote aye.
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 Aye, no.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. We will recommend approval of the Scrabble Tower in this application. And that brings us to PWS, FU number 190801, Woodville Tower site location. Before we plunge into this one, and I know there was some discussion about the DMS as a pair, but in an effort to perhaps streamline this conversation, I'm going to start by saying, given the changes and now this newly introduced idea of kind of height versus service trade-off and possibly others, I personally feel like that what might want to do in this one is for me here to make sure that we're looking at those particular considerations. So, I'm, I'm kind of disposed in that direction, not to, you know, I think Ms. Ishi, this is actually in your, your ordinance, Smith's district, but I offer that just as a way of kind of kicking out the conversation.
I'm not sure, just actually...
Well, I'm saying that I think, while there is a question as to whether we are compelled to have another hearing because of the modification of the application, my personal disposition would be that we conduct another hearing, given the change, to deal with the potential trade-off between a lower tower and less service, and maybe less suitable co-location in a higher tower with more service. I know that I haven't really, I mean, it's obviously a shorter tower, it's pretty easy to say it's going to have less visual impact, but really, if, you know, Millie's cabin still sees it, I'm not sure that it's, that it's really going to make a huge difference to them, for example. So, I guess my point is, I think there is a material change, whether we're compelled to have them hearing or not, I would, I do feel a little differently about this one. So, anyway, it's your, it's your district, I just offer that to maybe help, help us move, help us maybe move a little more quickly through this one. But, Mr. Ishi, you have the floor.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I guess, I mean, my thought, unless others know better, is this is almost a question for the county attorney. I don't know what that does to the shot clock, I mean, if we have told them to have a hearing, maybe we have time to hold one next month, and...
There is some hold of one next month.
And make decisions after, um...
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Summers, was there not a, I thought I read something, email or something that Mr. Curry perhaps prepared on this, or could you, is that, am I, am I right about this? Did I not see an email where he addressed this question today?
The, the commission does not have to make a decision tonight. There's time, with the time table, that we can hold a public hearing for the December meeting.
But I thought he also had done some research on the question of whether a new hearing is required if the change in the application is one that would generally have less adverse impact.
He's hiding right there behind this...
Right here.
He's hiding right there behind, he's hiding behind the big guy back there.
He's got that blueberry haze shirt on, so...
Sounds like so...
Not to put you on the spot, to put you on the spot, have you, do you feel like you have an answer to this question?
The county attorney?
I believe Michelle has some information. The county attorney and I spoke about it, he didn't render a ruling, basically.
Can I ask the last question?
It's covered in our local ordinance in 170 dash 108 dot six, amendments to the application.
So, I mean...
Covered State Code 1522285.
108 point what? The company member who brought the ordinance, this is...
So, here's the, here's the... I'll shut up. Could you pull up this document? For Gary, the subject, mute for a second, public hearing. You have that. Oh, you don't? I could, if you'd like, it's a paragraph that I could try to just reading for...
For me?
Uh, okay, well, I'm not sure, yeah. You want to just literally blank out? Well, here's the, here's the, here's the operative sentence, and I'm not sure how far this will take us, but in section 15.2 dash 2285, preparation and adoption of zoning ordinance and map amendments thereto appeal, this is, includes special exception and special permits. I'll just read this first part quickly. "Before approving and adopting any zoning ordinance or amendment thereof, the governing body shall hold at least one public hearing thereon pursuant to the public notice as required in 152204, after which the governing body may make appropriate changes or corrections in the ordinance or proposed amendment. In the case of a proposed amendment to the zoning map, the public notice shall state the general usage and density range of the proposed amendment and the general usage and density range, if any, set forth in the applicable part of the comprehensive plan." Here's I get the operative part. "However, no land may be zoned to a more intensive use classification than was contained in the public notice without an additional public hearing after notice required in 152204. Zoning ordinance shall be enacted in the same manner as all other ordinances." So, I think the operative point here is that that legal requirement compels us to have another hearing if the, if the, actually, here's another reason. "Every action contesting a decision of a local governing body adopting or failing to adopt a proposed zoning ordinance or amendment thereto, or granting or failing to grant special exception, shall be followed within three days of the decision, the certific court having jurisdiction of the land affected by the decision. However, nothing in this subsection shall be restricted to any new right." Anyway, I think the upshot is the tentative conclusion was that, and here's another section referred down, "Any amendment in the opinion of the board substantially changes the application from which was advertised a public hearing before the board, such as a request, such as to request different, additional, larger, or expanded facilities, which may have a more negative impact on any of the provisions of this article than what was advertised, or shall either refer the amended application back to the planning commission for its recommended or made in the application." So, again, all the references to another hearing tend to be for greater impact. I don't know that that's defended, that that's the material that is...
We all know that according from 199 to 179, the 139 or better, is a less impact.
Well, that's a story, that's covered. That's part of people getting radiation through nearby houses. Careful. Please, you did some line during the other...
It seems to me, since you've asked, that this is a question that we ought to be somewhat careful on, that we, you know, it would be nice to have an opinion from the county attorney and actually, well, on this legal question, but if we have the opportunity to have another hearing anyway, it might be better to be safe than sorry.
So, you're going to advertise this again?
So, in that case, I would assume we'd have to advertise it again.
Yeah, that's what we would do, and that would allow us to consider, I know there had been, there was at least one or two public commenters who said, we want the 199, not the 139, because we want the additional coverage. So, I do think that there is an operative difference here, and I think you're right that if there's a question as to whether it's required, since we have the time to do the hearing, the prudent thing to do would be to go ahead and say we'll schedule another hearing.
That sounds like a good idea to me.
Because my understanding, when you read the ordinance, was it was talking about the board, not about the planning commission. And so, the board, to my mind, at that point, would be the board of supervisors as opposed to the planning commission, and the change could be discussed, advertised, or dealt with by them as opposed to us here.
I would also read it somewhat that way, except my question would be, it says, "If any amendment in the, in the opinion of the board," and I would agree that's the board of supervisors, "substantially changes the application from that which has advertised a public hearing before the board, such as to request different, additional, larger, or expanded facilities," which, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But then it says that the, the board shall either refer the amended application back to the planning commission for its recommendations or table the application. So, my concern would be, we've got a shot clock, and we, if the lawyer has to send it back to us, then we've got an issue with the shot clock. And so, it seems to me that it's, if there's a, if there's a question that it may have to come back to us, we might as well just do it now.
For a hearing, I mean, there's also the question of, it's not clear to me from this what we're to do with it if it comes back to us, but if this is all being driven because something changed between when it was provided for notice and when we had a hearing, it seems to me, from a lawyer, that we would avoid that by having another notice and having another hearing.
And I, I do appreciate the irony of this one from the applicant, that they gave us something that they were hoping that we would ask, we're probably, we also want to make sure we're, you know, we're doing what we need to do. So, I, I don't know, I don't know if Michelle or Gary have an opinion on, on maybe here, but it seems to me better safe than sorry if we have the opportunity to have this additional hearing.
Why would you have them, if I may? Sure.
I mean, this is a suggestion from the applicant, right? This is a suggestion from the applicant.
The reduced height?
Yeah. I mean, I do have, I mean, I've come this far, you know? I do have, I'm sorry that we're reducing coverage for the county, which is something that we're trying to accomplish, and we're leaving people out potentially around a good propagation, that's not a clue, it's getting a little workhorse, but, you know, I think that if we had a 199, we probably could, and you wouldn't have this issue.
Well, can I, can I just respond to that, that, that we, and we just took the vote on the Scrabble Tower, which was something that we had to talk over, if you want, had that, to have a lower tower.
We, we did Scrabble Towers, simply from Scrabble Towers, not in anything to do with Elden Park, that was a separate application, it's still in the marriage, and it was not connected with Elden, it was an application, it was next up, but it was completely disconnected with it, so that is not an argument on this one.
I can't quite say that it was completely disconnected, I think for the public hearing, what the public came to was...
We had two public hearings, we had two public hearings, and we have two votes, that means it was two separate applications.
I think you did draw the conclusion though, earlier, Mr. Henry, that we can't do for one application that we haven't historically done for other applications.
So, that was, you need to treat this application the way we treated all the other past applications over the last 15 years, in consideration of the heights, youth shed, the impact, all these conditions. And what I was saying is, Woodville is no different than what we did in Washington, Sperryville, Painesville, Picklehead, and we applied the same standards to them that we did in the past applications, is what I said.
I, to try to, I think there is a, we are in a slightly different situation here by virtue of the proffer to shorten the tower, and some consideration, it seems at least among some of us, that we might, there's a, there's a possibility that we would prefer the taller tower. So, I think that puts us in a slightly different situation, and I think it puts the public in a slightly different situation than that which occurred when we had the original hearing. So, I guess what was noticed was 199 feet, and that's what was present in the hearing, and the, I don't know if it qualifies as an amended application or the proffer is shorter, so I don't know that, I, I agree with you, Mr. Henry, that this is a distinct application, and it should be considered as such, but I do think it's different because of...
I always go back to addressing the 199, that's what we had a public hearing on, address that, and if by chance we send yes to a, if the applicant wants to maintain the 175, they can talk to the county attorney and board supervisors and say, hey, you know, it's okay, we'll take the 179, but if not, we'll take the 199.
I believe you mean 139.
Oh, 139, yeah.
I, I think I followed you.
139.
Think I followed you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But...
Plus 40 feet, I'm...
1030.
It's drilling a well.
Could we, I guess, I'm inclined to ask the applicant, how, are you at this point indifferent, I mean, I know you offered to do the 139, but is it fair for us to assume that you'd still rather have a 199? Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
And then, if you, just for clarification, again, that's based on what Chantel told us in the letter that they sent, which is, this is what we can live with to accomplish our primary goal, which is seamless coverage along the road, you know, beyond Sperryville to beyond Boston, but it will reduce, you know, to some extent, the coverage extending out from that border.
And presumably, the first person to lease it gets the top, is that how it generally works?
They want it, yes, it is what they want.
So, presumably...
Occasionally, that's not true when you're in a more dense area, but here, they would want it.
So, if I could, Mr. Curry or Ms. Summers, could you help us out in this, clarify whether, confirm my understanding that the shot clock as currently running, we would have time to have another hearing at our next meeting?
Ms. Summers already confirmed that.
Okay.
Could we conceivably have another meeting if the advice we get from counsel suggests it?
Well, we could, but we have an application before us. I guess I'm, I'm still, I still feel like there's, there's some differing views here. I know it's getting late, I would like to try to lead us in the direction of a decision that could satisfy at least three of us.
I like to see, I like to see that residents of Rockland County get cell service as much as possible, you know, as many people as possible. I mean, I don't have it where I live down about Long Road, and I don't have people need it, and if you're depressing the area by going to 139, and 199 serves a lot more people going towards Five Forks and other locations down there, I think we're doing them to the service.
I'm prepared to make the motion.
Please.
I'd like to move that we, we hold, that we open this for a public hearing, the Woodville Tower, at our next, our next planning commission meeting, and I'll just say, that's the motion, but just the discussion here is enough to make my head spin. I don't know, I'm not even sure, you know, whether we're talking now about 199 feet or 139 feet, or...
Yes.
We voted on, we voted on something where it was supposed to be a package, and it's not a package anymore.
It was never a package.
Well, yeah.
Well, they were, they, they said that the condition, 139 condition...
Well, meaning we can't drop the height to that level unless we maintain the height at the other, that's, but, but, yeah, but that said, it's a separate standalone, it will, you know, if Woodville never got approved, the county would still benefit from the Scrabble Tower.
So, that kind of...
So, and, I don't know that this is necessary, but just to clarity, presumably, the issue... So, and I don't know if this is necessary, but just to clarity, presumably the issue is to, the reason treating this differently is because of the proposed change in the height and the consideration of the trade-off between the visual impact and the impact that has on the potential service and the visual impact of the tower. And that's why we're, not that we need to have a reason for your motion, but to make sure we're on the same page.
I guess I would say it that because there has been a change that could potentially be a substantial change, that we need to have an opportunity for public hearing on it.
Do we want to maintain that substantial change? If we went to the 199.
We have a motion on the table, I think we can have a discussion, let's see if it gets accepted.
I think we need to specify what we're advertising for. And I, I don't mean to co-opt your motion, but I think we should re-advertise this application for a public hearing at the new height of 139 feet and specifying any other applicable details that may need to be noticed for that public hearing, from the revised details by the applicant.
I would accept that provision to the motion.
So now a motion, do we articulate it? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay, so now it's Ms. Smith's motion, Ms. Ishii's second.
Is that correct? Or she can have it, amend it, and I can second it.
Probably the right thing is for you to amend your motion and for Ms. Smith to second.
Okay.
Okay, but either way, you have a motion.
I amend my motion per the wording that Ms. Smith has offered.
I think we got it.
And I'll second.
You have a motion.
Thank you.
Now, any further discussion on the motion to advertise and hold another hearing as described? Mr. Berg, I think you were trying to make some comments. Would you like any other discussion? Okay, well, let's start down with that, and again, we have a motion duly made and seconded. Mr. Berg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Ishii?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kohler?
No, you're wrong.
This is why you get hate the big bucks, Mr. Kohler.
Follow your heart. Well. Nay.
Quickly and quietly, so we can continue our business. So the next item on the agenda is the matter that was added with respect. If I could please ask you if you have to have conversations at the Capitol, so maybe go downstairs where we can do our business. So the next item on the agenda is the item we added with respect to the, to the matter of our having voted on the commissions back in April of 2018 to hold a public hearing on the request of the Sperryville bill, fire and rescue.
Amosville.
Sorry, Amosville, to modify the sign ordinance. This is a matter that came to my attention earlier today, so it is, it has a limited ability to track it down, so I'm going to make some comments based on my recollection, and then, you know, we'll talk about it as we will. So let me start out by saying, I certainly, first of all, I believe the reason that we didn't have the hearing was based on some discussion in the late April, early May timeframe that I ultimately interpreted as the matter was moot because the request had been withdrawn. Now, I don't have any documentation of that, as best I can tell, Ms. Summers does not have any documentation of that. The only thing I will say in response to that is, nor did we have any correspondence between then and now asking for that hearing, so while we don't have any definitive evidence of why we thought it was moot after making the vote, and perhaps we didn't adequately dispense with it, I would note that I think it was a shared understanding, and that's why we haven't heard anything about it for the past 18 months. Presumably, if there was a hearing that someone was actually expecting this, it would have taken less than 18 months for it to be brought back to our attention. Having said that, if the, if, and being unable to undo what was done, were not done 17 or 18 months ago, if it's the, well, actually, before I say that, with respect to the requested change, I do recall that the discussion was, and the proposed change was rather limited to some verbiage that added fire and rescue, emergency medical services, you know, some list of additional entities that would be added to the current list of entities, government entities, that are exempt already from the sign-in. So it was a very simple verbal request, and my understanding of the reason that it became moot was that after the discussion that we had, and some of the concerns that were raised about expanding the exemption, that the applicant, for whatever reason, it's not clear to me what those reasons were, thought they had an additional or a different path forward. That's my recollection.
So, Mr. Chairman, we can talk about this for a while, or we can just go ahead and have a hearing to add to the list of exempt positions next month?
We certainly, we certainly can, I just wanted, I know there have been questions about it, and I wanted to, I think it's a valid question, and I wish I had a tighter explanation for it.
It sounds good to me unless we want.
I second.
You second what, the notion of having a hearing?
Is that an to have a public hearing and move on?
All right, any further discussion?
What's the amendment? You have to put it in the end.
I presume we still have the, that language somewhere, because it was a handwritten markup, I can still picture. Okay.
There you go.
So we have a motion duly made and seconded, any further discussion?
Michelle, do you feel confident that you have everything documented that you need to advertise this properly?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I'm sorry, there's one other item that's under informational, but I wanted to indulge, I'd ask for a few more minutes of indulgence. I know there was, there's also been some questions about our commitment to scheduling another work session on comprehensive plan. I do apologize to the commissioners. I have been reluctant to schedule that because I've had some business travel, that's been unclear when that was going to be. It looked like I could have been gone for the first two weeks of December. That has now been settled, I'm going to be here for the first two weeks in December, and I would just like to inform you that I've asked Ms. Summers to take steps to try to schedule a work session at a mutually, you know, best convenient time during that period for us to take up the matter of categorizing and defining the path forward of the timeframe for the Berkeley group recommendations on the comprehensive plan as per the. Great, thank you. Any other?
Could I add to that, that would it, just a suggestion that perhaps the staff would come prepared in advance of that work session with, I know at our meeting for supervisors, there had been communication that staff might be able to quickly draft some strongman language for us on those four provisions that Berkeley said were essential to the state department, so I wanted to talk with the staff at the time to draft such language, strongman language for us, so that we'd be able to, in advance of the work session.
I think that's a very reasonable, and I support that request. I would also say that if any of the commissioners, I know there's been some people sort of thinking about language as we're in this state, you know, we've been at this for a while, and I would say that if any of, if any of the fellow commissioners feel that they would like to put forward language that they think could get support at that meeting, that would only, I think, help us advance the vote and avoid the inherent challenges of trying to draft as approved. So, anyway, that's all I have on that, I didn't want to address it. And our next regular meeting then would be Wednesday, December 18th, and with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Advert.
All right, thank you very much.